It's ten o'clock and it's time for the compliment session. We have Mr. Altore, Mr. Holden, and Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mrs. Walters. Wow. Five members present and five more to the floor.
Council will please come to order. First order of business?
Approval of an minutes.
All right, Mr. Ridley Thomas moves. Mr. Holden seconds. There's no objection, unanimous vote. The next item?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
There's no objection, unanimous vote. Next item?
Salute to the flag.
Okay. Members of the council, as is our custom, the first meeting of the month, we pledge our allegiance to the flag. But if you will remain standing, we will have the invocation by Dr. O.C. Smith of the City of Angels Church of Religious Science, representing the Los Angeles Interfaith Committee and the Religious Science Community of Los Angeles. Would we all please stand and would Mr. Ridley Thomas lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Mr. President, members of the council and to the audience, please place your right hand over your heart and repeat, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Dr. O.C. Smith?
Would you please just be still with me for a moment in mind? As I speak these words for each one of us here and for those in the sound of my voice, knowing that there is one life and one mind and one infinite spirit, one God that permeates the universe and all that is in it. And so today we come together as one to affirm this truth, to open ourselves to the realization that in some divine mystical way, some cosmic way, we are part of this universal activity. Just as the wave of the ocean is one with the ocean and as the ray of the sun is one with the sun and the branch of the tree is one with the tree, so are we, each one of us. We are part of this divine love and presence that God is. We affirm that each member of this city council is blessed in a wonderful way today and that their minds will be open and receptive to express and to share their love and their wisdom with those here today. We bless this city, knowing that it is a part of this divine cosmic being and that God's love is always guiding and directing each individual who resides in it. We give thanks for these blessings that we are aware of, those that we are not. We see this day, a wonderful glorious day with the sunlight of truth shining in and through it. We let these words be so, affirming that all is well. And because truth is, and besides truth, there is none other. Together now, please join me in saying amen. And so it is.
Okay, then, next order of business?
Before we get to the regular agenda, there's a request for continuance for items number 11, 12, and 17 until March 16th.
Is there any objections to the continuance? 11, 12, and 17? Seeing none, that will be the order. Okay. We do have a presentation today. Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Mr. President, members of the council, we thank you for this opportunity to make this presentation. And I'd like to take it to acknowledge someone who for over thirty years has devoted his time, his energy, his talent, his treasure, to improving the quality of life in many of our city's neighborhoods, some of which are those that we see as most in need of services and resources. Mr. President, I speak of no other than Mr. John Olay. Now, John, why don't you come forward? Until very recently, Mr. Olay decided to step down as the president and chief administrative officer of the Weingard Foundation where he served for the past five years. During that time, he orchestrated a major role for the foundation in very significant projects involving the YMCA, the Boys and Girls Club, the Los Angeles Police Department's Jeopardy program, the Salvation Army, and most significantly, and most recently, I should say, the New Exposition Park Intergenerational Community Center. An exciting addition to that park, which members of the council, you've seen by way of video and otherwise, and John and I have worked closely on that. I know firsthand the deep level of commitment John has to improving the lives of young people by providing them with educational and recreational opportunities, new facilities, program activities, and other resources they need to grow and to flourish. Through his work, thousands of children and families have benefited from programs and activities which he has initiated and/or administered. You know, many of you know that prior to joining the Weingard Foundation, John Olay demonstrated exemplary vision and leadership at the YMCA of Metropolitan Los Angeles, starting with that organization as a program director in 1963. He moved up the executive ladder to president and CEO, a position that John held where many of us came to know him for some sixteen years. His legacy at the Y includes the development of new inner-city facilities and operations throughout the city of Los Angeles and the cities of Compton and Inglewood as well. And upon hearing that John had chosen to move on to other challenges, I can only hope that he stays involved. And he's already assured me that he is already busy doing many exciting and worthwhile things. Those things that you will appreciate will benefit rather significantly the citizens of Los Angeles and beyond, particularly his focus on youth. We desperately need more individuals like John Olay, those who have the knowledge, the skill, the special spirit, and compassion to bring such resources to the greater Los Angeles community. So, John, on behalf of the entire Los Angeles City Council, we take this opportunity to present you with this resolution that essentially congratulates you for your contributions to not only the YMCA and not only the Weingard Foundation, but for the work that you do throughout the city of Los Angeles and beyond. And we do this on behalf of the entire Los Angeles City Council with much regard and respect for your contributions.
John, what you, Mr. Hernandez?
You know, Mr. President, members of the council, I also wanted to rise to say a few words about Mr. John Olay because he just contributed quite a bit of time in the development as the co-chair of the Human Services RFP that's going to be going out as part of the block grant. And I think it's important because a lot of us have been asking about that request for proposals. I just wish we had more money in it. But the reality is, Mr. Olay contributed a lot of time and a lot of meetings, working hand in hand with the community advisory board in regards to that RFP. He also did some extensive work in Lincoln Heights in terms of studying it and trying to figure out what are some of the things that could happen to revitalize that community, putting at greater emphasis on the education component as well as some of the youth facilities. And I just wanted to acknowledge those efforts and thank him for his work.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Bernson?
John, we'll get to you eventually, okay? But I couldn't let the moment pass without adding a few words for myself because I've had the opportunity to work with the Y and as my colleague, Mr. Ferraro, has. And we want to really recognize the efforts that you put into our young people and to our community. So, I want to thank you for everything you've done and wish you well in the future. Thank you.
Now you can talk.
Thank you all very much. It's wonderful to receive recognition and I just want to say how much I appreciate being a member of the private sector, working with so many people in the public sector who are also trying to make Los Angeles the great city that it is and that it will be. And I'm going to continue working that way. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, if you'd be kind enough to join me for this presentation? Thank you, Mr. President. To the members of the city council, we have yet another very special guest with us today. And I would say that it is an honor to bring to your attention one of our own. A young man this city has reason to be proud of.
Thank you, Mark.
And Mr. Ferraro assumes that I'm talking about him. He came up and said, "Thank you very much." But, Mr. President?
No, you said younger.
Yes. I speak of our own Mr. Keyshawn Johnson. Mr. Johnson, why don't you come forward so that we can welcome you? Would you give him a hand, please? Today, an all-pro wide receiver for the New York Jets. In the past, a young man growing up in South Los Angeles who figured he was going to be a star football player one day. And there were plenty of challenges along the way, but lo and behold, his determination, and some would say his chutzpah, made him just that, a star. Keyshawn is here today in part for his athletic accomplishments. We know him as a graduate of Dorsey High School and the University of Southern California. He finished his senior year at USC as that institution's most valuable player. And as the Pac-10 Offensive Player of the Year both in ninety, 1995. A year later, he was selected as the top draft pick in the NFL by the Jets. With each new season on the team, Keyshawn has distinguished himself as an exceptional player. He is also here today because of what he's giving back to the community, in particular to young people, who is his focus, who are his focus. He is founder of a community awareness and outreach program for disadvantaged youth in New York called K's Kids. He's also actively involved in sports and supports and contributes to a number of charitable organizations. And on many levels and in many ways, he makes a regular practice of giving resources and services to those who need them most. Mr. Johnson has excelled as an athlete, as a role model, as a citizen of Los Angeles of whom we can be proud. And for these accomplishments, both the president and I, as well as the entire city council, would wish to salute him for his accomplishments and say to him that when we think of those who represent the city of Los Angeles well as ambassadors who make Angelinos proud, we certainly think of Keyshawn Johnson. Mr. President, if you would be kind enough to have words?
Thank you, Mark. I think it's appropriate that we honor Keyshawn. He is a role model. He is, he's proven on the field what he says in private and public. If you watch the playoff games, he had one of the most outstanding games that ever, any player's ever had, ending up by going on defense to intercept the last play of the game. So, I'm just pleased to join with Mark Ridley Thomas in honoring Keyshawn Johnson. We wish you well, Keyshawn. Don't forget where you came from, and I know you won't. He's a great role model. Thank you, Mr.
Now, I assume that was to suggest, don't forget that you are a Trojan, Keyshawn, and...
John never lets anybody forget that.
And Angelino. We take this opportunity to acknowledge Jerome Stanley, who's here with him. Jerome, why don't you stand and be acknowledged? Jerome is active in our efforts here in the city as well. Keyshawn is a lawyer and agent. It's not too bad, Mr. President, that Mr. Johnson is the Pro Bowl MVP. We take note of that and we say congratulations once again to you for that. So, on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, Keyshawn, we make this presentation of this certificate, this resolution, that acknowledges all that you do and that which you will continue to do in our community and beyond. Thank you. All right. Have a word.
First of all, I'd like to thank this entire city council, including Councilman Ridley Thomas. You know, this is a special day and a special moment for me because of the struggles that I've been through throughout my entire life to get to this point, from an educational standpoint to a financial standpoint. Now, you know, being able to give back to those that need and provide, you know, intellectual things for them, I think it's a plus for all of us. And to sit here and be in the presence of you all and watch your work and see the things that you do for the city of Los Angeles, one thing I will say is I'll never, ever leave Los Angeles. This will always be my home, no matter where I play as a professional athlete. I will make my home in Los Angeles. And once again, thank you all for this special moment.
Thank you.
I want to ask, I want to ask Keyshawn, you talked about financial, what was your signing bonus, Keyshawn?
Keyshawn, if you don't want to answer that, you don't have to answer that.
I just wanted to say that I was offered $8,000, Keyshawn, to play.
Well, that's all, you know, John, we don't want to talk about it.
It was a different time.
Yeah. All right.
On the regular agenda, item number four, confirmation of city official, Ms. Karina Alarcon to the Board of Building and Safety Commission.
All right, Ms. Alarcon, if you could please step forward. Have a seat. Ms. Chick?
Yes. Colleagues? No. Mr. President, colleagues, I will not be verbose. I think most of us know Mrs. Alarcon and welcome her participation in the Building and Safety Commission. She was before the Public Safety Committee yesterday. And we present her to you for a unanimous vote and thank her for her willingness to give of her time, energy, and talents to the city of Los Angeles.
Okay. All right. Anybody else want to be heard on this item? All right. On the confirmation of Ms. Alarcon, open the roll. Close the roll.
Thirteen ayes.
You have been unanimously confirmed.
Thank you.
And thank you very much, Karina.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item?
Items number two and three, items noticed for public hearing.
Is there anybody in the chamber who wants to be heard on two or three? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Any discussion on two or three? We have, a motion is required on two. Mrs. Walters? On item number two, you have a motion?
Yes, we do. This is, would you leave this on the desk for a moment, please?
All right, let's do item three. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Items number five through 10, items for which public hearings have been held. Items number five through 10, items for which public hearings have been held.
Are there any specials by council members? Five through 10? Any specials? If not, prepare the roll. Five through 10, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Mrs. Walters?
Yes, I'm ready on item two. This is for a Rite Aid drugstore that's taking a portion of the old Robinson's Department Store downtown on Seventh Street. And we're very pleased to see that corner reactivated. So their primary business is not selling alcohol, but it's part of their primary business. So I would urge a yes vote.
You would move to Grant. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. That is approved. Next item.
Items number 13 through 30 and 32 through 35, items to which public hearings have not been held.
Okay, let's see, we have people who want to be heard on 16, 27, 28. Anybody want to be heard on any of the other items? 13 through 30 and 32 through 35. Seeing none, the public hearings close on those, except those that I've called out. Any specials by council members? Any specials by council members?
Mr. Ridley Thomas, call number 32 special.
32.
Mr. President, on 32, I think we should hold that and go into closed session on that pursuant to the government code for litigation.
Okay, we, it's called special. So prepare the roll on 13 through 30, with the exception of 16. 17 has already been taken care of. 27 and 28. And then 33, 34, and 35. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next item. 31 is a closed session. We'll hold that on the desk also.
On the desk, we have number one.
Okay. Members of the Council, number one is the charter. We have people who want to be heard, so... Marilyn Stout. Howard Watts. Marilyn Stout, did you want to be heard or not?
I wish to answer some of the questions that Mr. Alatorre raised the other day. He said, "What's wrong with the city and what about this new charter would fix it?" What's wrong with the city, the county, the metropolitan water district, the state, is that no one cares how big the debt is. As long as the public votes, put it on my back, I'll pay for that in general obligation bonds. The trouble is, nobody's doing a good benefit versus cost analysis to decide whether the benefits equal the cost and whether who benefits and who pays the cost. I don't think anything in the proposed charter attends to that problem. We really do need better cost versus benefit analyses in every kind of government, including the school board. In this proposed charter, the suggested charter, we suggest the executive, chief executive officer be appointed by the City Council and that this person would do the cost versus benefit analyses. I brought a couple of copies of Big Government and the Citizen. It mentions on the first page how the efficiencies of government depends on a good administrative chart. And all the rest of the pages mention the importance of legislative power. I think that the 300-page charter diminishes legislative power, and this should not be happening. Thank you.
Okay. Howard Watts. And then Ken Brazel.
Thank you, John. First of all, where are the public? Where is it when this charter is going to be potentially voted on today? Did the two executive directors of both these charters send out notices, let the public know that there's silly things coming up? First of all, the elected Charter Commission was elected by the public. They were not, and I'll say it again, were not appointed by the City Council members or constitutional officers. For that reason, this charter has to be thrown out the window and separate the two charters and let the City Council do their thing on their charter from the appointed commission. The second one is the elected charter. They should be putting their own charter on the ballot. They seen that they would lose the charter movement and the charter itself if they did not join together. Well, I say to you folks, and I've been going to these meetings for both of the commissions quite regularly, I say to you, if you're afraid of the public, we're not afraid of you and we will stop this charter if it needs initiative to get that stopped or a lawsuit to get it stopped. Because this charter, both of them, have been violating the Brown Act over and over again, constantly, as long as they've been in operation. And they don't care about the public whatsoever. We don't need these people or these two charters combined or either of the charters. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ken Brazel.
Thank you, council members. This morning, all of you received copies of a letter delivered to your office. Basically, firefighter's position is real simple. We have five outstanding issues that are at the bargaining table. We offered a counter to today that we would withdraw two of them if we could get resolution on three. I don't seem to be able to find out who it is that has authority. The Charter, the elected Charter Commission seems to say they have bargaining authority. But when we try and push for it, it comes back that the council has final say. We are trying to get resolution on this. We don't think that the process is going through the good faith process. It's supposed to be established in the city. And we would like to get these resolved before you put them on the ballot. The only other option I've got is to try and hold up the process beyond March 5th, which doesn't seem to be what everybody is looking for. What we're asking for, a couple of them are technical corrections. They don't cost the city any money. The third issue is a little more controversial, but we're willing to sit down and work on that. But we want to have somebody meet with us in good faith, as the commitment was prior to this going on the ballot. And to be very candid with you, I don't seem to be able to get a good, straightforward, honest answer from anybody as to who has the authority to sit down and meet with my organization. And I would ask that either when you go into executive session to deal with the meet and confer process items, that we come up with a resolution or else you leave me no other option but to try and invoke the impasse process. Thank you.
Julian Bromley.
Julian Bromley, Los Angeles, resident. I'm just here again today to urge you to essentially adopt the unified charter and put it on the ballot. But I'd also like to remind all council members that the primary implementation date is July 1st, 2000. And it concerns me, what will happen if all the ordinances and the like that need to be adopted by then aren't? What will happen? Again, thank you, Julian Bromley.
Thank you. Brian Hutchins. Do you still live in Santa Monica?
Yes, I do. Brian Hutchins, Santa Monica, home of the famous Rand Corporation. I just wanted to especially question something that came up later. Earlier, when charter reform was first being discussed, it was said that it was not going to be for the benefit of the current mayor. It was going to be for the next mayor. And now all of a sudden, it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be his thing, even though it's supposed to be implemented later. That's a problem. But the whole problem with reform is that there's a big tendency nowadays for it to be involved with Al Gore's rego, reinventing government. And if you know anything about Al Gore, that's why I recommend getting this paper so you do, you'd know that there's a lot of ridiculous stuff involved with it. And I want to particularly point out the role of the Rand Corporation, who is the major consultant for both of the charter reform groups. That's why I call this Big Wand. It's Mayor Riordan's Big Wand after the Rand Corporation. They did a similar thing in New York City in 1975, which was called Big Mac. It was very controversial at the time, more controversial than this has been, for sure. I mean, there was a big fight over it. And the first few of the meetings that I attended, the elected and the appointed commission, I got the first draft report from Rand about charter reform. And it was very interesting, the language that they used, which was the language of operations research that they used in the military. And they cleaned that up after that, but I'm pretty sure, I actually didn't see it, but I'm sure they did, but it had that, some very strange language in there. And just to show you some of the people that are involved with this, before, until I spoke up about it as Santa Monica City Council...
Would you wrap it up, Mr. Hutchins? We have other people who want to be heard?
Yes, I shall. But until I spoke up about it, Ms. Condoleezza Rice, who's a provost at Stanford, was on the Board of Rand, and she's also on Aldi Norris Project Democracy. And now she's working for George Bush JR 2000 campaign. There's a guy who's still on there. Sir Brandt got kicked off. There's still a guy on there, Volker.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yari Hashemi.
Good morning. Yari Hashemi, Mr. President. In the last couple of years, I've made many remarks in opposition to some of the elements that have been involved in the charter reform debate. But I'm here today in support of placing the new charter on the ballot so that the people of this city can vote on it. I, no time in the history of Los Angeles since the original charter was placed on the ballot, has there been so much public involvement and participation in debating issues that are in our charter. I would outline 10 good reasons why I think that we should go ahead and place this document on the ballot. I believe that the foundation of the progressive document that was created at the turn of the century, basically, has been maintained in place: direct democracy, civil service. Also, number two, the nonpartisan element in our democratic system is preserved. We are creating community councils, coupled with area planning commissions, that can go a long way in encouraging people who are concerned with the way our government runs and participation in the valley to move away from secession and get involved in trying to rebuild their communities, considering that Article IX would be put in place and would start immediately after the charter is approved. Living wage, which many of us have fought for over the years, and indeed, the proudest moment perhaps in the last couple of years in these chambers, has been when all of you supported strongly, the living wage provisions are going to be now part of the charter. That's a good message for the rest of the country as well. Litigation, control of litigation can improve with the changes we are making. Flexibility that we are bringing to government, including in contracting and purchasing. The voice of Inspector General will be stronger and she would have, or he would have access to the information that she or he would need to do his or her job. Even the two amendments we are placing on the ballot, which I am going to adamantly oppose, would be a good way of sparking, starting a public debate over the issue of representation and how we can improve it, whether it's about going to smaller districts or we should be looking in other ways. And finally, term limits, although that's probably not a good thing to bring up in these chambers, but it does keep term limits. Let's strike that one. The last one, 10, would eliminate the need for poor souls like myself to have to go to a lot of other meetings. And folks, I think this would, if we place these reforms on the ballot and if it passes, this would be a beginning for reform. It would not be an end. But if we kill the reforms, it will be a long time before anybody would have the desire to bring this back before the public. So I urge you all to place this on the ballot and let the voters decide. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alan Clayton.
My name is Alan Clayton. I'm here representing the L.A. City County Latino Redistricting Coalition. I just have one comment. We have a concern in dealing with the issue of the size of the council, and I'd like to explain that. In discussing the charter, I've been before both committees numerous times, dealing with the issue of the size, dealing with the issue of the impact on minority communities. We felt that the optimal size was 25 after a careful review. We were able to draw eight seats in the San Fernando Valley, four seats where the Afro-American community could be able to elect a candidate of their own choice, and six seats after 2000 where the Latino community could also have that opportunity, and two additional seats by the end of the 2010. But the concern we have right now is the issue dealing with the voters understanding what they're voting on so that they can vote in a way that will be meaningful. And with 21 and 25 outside the charter being voted on, we have a concern that there may be confusion among the voters in that they may believe that if they vote for 21 or 25, that is the option. The problem is, is that they may decide not to vote for either 21 or 25, plus the individuals that don't want expansion, thereby neither 21 or 25 will be given a fair opportunity. Our concern is there be language in there that clearly says, "Do you favor expansion?" And if 50% favor expansion, then which would you prefer, 21 or 25? We think that is the realistic language, and if that language is not in there, really, the charter issue as far as expansion is one that we think will lead to confusion, will lead to disenfranchisement of voters who do really want to change the districts, make them smaller, make them more easily accessible for their elected official, and also to give the minority communities better opportunity to compete for districts in the future. Thank you.
Members, that's all the cards we have, so we'll close the public hearing at this time. But let me point out that my understanding, the city attorney suggested we go into executive session first on the charter. So with that, we'll lay this on the desk, and we have a couple items that we have. Item number 16, we have a card. We have something Paul Shore that wants to be heard. Paul Shore, did you want to be heard?
Yes, I did. Good morning.
Go ahead.
It's actually Howard Paul Shore.
Yeah, well, if you can read that, you qualify to be a doctor to write prescriptions.
Thank you. I'm lieutenant advocate at 672 South Rampart Boulevard, and I'm here to discuss a few basic issues in our building over the last year. Our building has been under very bad conditions. We've had problems with our security gate being not working, and people have been breaking into the apartments all the time. In the past month... In the past month, there's been two break-ins. So our gate has been totally unsecure. We have a lot of vermin and rodents in the building running around. We have serious electrical problems, which was going to cost over $50,000 to repair, as well as plumbing problems. And I'm strongly recommending that this case gets turned into the rent escrow account program by REAP, by where we pay the money to the city instead of to the manager. And that's what my recommendation is as a tenant advocate for the building. And I want to thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
The public hearing's closed on at 16. Mr. Hernandez?
Yeah, I think you had the owner was going to make a statement. I want to make sure I got both sides.
Mr. Dimdell?
Good morning. I'm the owner of the building at 672 Rampart. This gentleman that was just here is a constant aggravator in the building. We've asked him to move. He's been so unhappy. My problem is that I've hired an electrical engineer to do the electrical work. He did about 10 days of work. We paid him $22,000, and he absconded with the money and never finished the job. What we're asking for is to give us 60 days to complete the job. I have now made arrangements with another electrical contractor to complete it. We've done everything we can. We've hired the Dewey Pest Control people to do a job. We cleaned everything that we can. But there are so many difficulties in this building that we're trying very hard to do a good job. And I would appreciate extra time to complete it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
Mr. President, members of the council, normally, my position would be for this property to go straight into the REAP account because it's gone through several phases. But when I asked for the background information on the report from the department, the department basically, the Code Enforcement Unit inspected property on January 7th. And at that time, reported that approximately, and there's a question mark of how much work had been completed, but it was more than half of the work had been actually begun. And so then, this project was basically turned over to the interagency housing task force. And they received it February 24th. And they basically reported to staff yesterday that they had not had the opportunity to go out and re-inspect the building to see how much work had been done. They also have the safety department, the health department, and the fire department, who are looking at this building. And so what I wanted to do is, and I asked the department, "How fast could we get these departments to report back to us so that we know how much work is done? Is it completed or not?" They said that they would need about 30 days. Now, when I'm saying that, what I'm saying is we're willing to continue this item for 30 days. But the owner needs to know that if the work is not done, it's going into REAP. And that way, he can continue his work because he was ripped off by a contractor. The reality being that the department did verify some of the work was being done. He has stated that he is working on the infestation issue. And I think that is paramount, and that has to be done right away. And so, to give the department the time to do its work, I'm going to ask for a 30-day continuance of this item. And I'm basically on the status report given to me by the department itself.
All right, is there any objections to the 30-day continuance on 16? Seeing none, that will be the order. Now, we have item 27 and 28. We have people who want to be heard on that. Incidentally, nine, we voted on nine. It was amended, and it should be approval of 9A. And nine as amended. So there's no objections. That will be the order. Kathy Deladoni, you want to be heard on 27 and 28?
My name is Kathy Deladoni, and I'm with the Tarzana Property Owners Association. Tarzana Property Owners Association strongly feels that requirements and guidelines are essential for the infrastructure needs of the telecommunications industry in order to ensure that antennas, monopoles, towers, and equipment boxes are not a visual blight for our city. In our community, it has become increasingly more difficult to keep the environmental impact to a minimum because there exists an aggressive and competitive atmosphere among the companies whose main purpose is to put up a tower rather than consider the neighborhood. Throughout the city, antennas clutter the landscape. Large equipment boxes are being placed throughout residential areas. With this growth and development of the telecommunications infrastructure comes the need for sound and reasonable planning and zoning standards that will minimize the visual impacts on each community. One must never forget that each community is entitled to be treated fairly and equally by the city and by the industry. Without having adequate guidelines, a city can place an unnecessary burden on its residents and communities. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing's closed. Ms. Sikowsky?
Thank you, Mr. President.
27 and 28.
I will speak on both 27 and 28. These are motions essentially asking the planning department, the city attorney, and the city engineer to come back with standards for the installation of antennas and all kind of related telecommunications facilities. As each member is now seeing, we have been able to prepare, through the help of Kathy Deladoni, pictures of the telecommunications antennas and facilities in each of the council districts. And what they essentially show is that we have no standards. What's worse is although we have no standards in the city of Los Angeles, there are standards in adjoining cities. So as a consequence, the city of L.A. is becoming the dumping ground for more of these facilities, where other cities have created better quality conditions and designs for the implementation in their areas. We also have a new problem occurring. And that is as the industry is changing and perhaps finding fewer and fewer sites on private properties to locate the monopoles and the other antennas, they are now looking at the city's public right-of-way. And in that instance, we have even lesser standard and lesser process for review. The city engineer essentially just signs off on these things with no public comment, no public input. And as many of the pictures are showing, we have some of these boxes, which are getting quite huge, five and six feet high, three or four feet across, put in our public right-aways, in our sidewalks, impeding pedestrian access, impeding the ability to get in and out of a car, and essentially cluttering our city and street landscape. The city engineer has advised my office and many other members of the council that there are now hundreds of requests for these facilities in our city and on our right-of-way. So these two motions attempt to say that we need to adopt the guidelines. About three years ago, the city planning department instituted a review and created a proposal for some guidelines. The city planning commission ultimately recommended them. But the city council has not reviewed, received, and adopted these guidelines. So we need to create that uniformity. We need to create consistency. We need to address this problem because the impact in our city is becoming ever more present and will even increase in the future, particularly in our public right-of-way. So these motions essentially ask the responsible city agencies to draft the guidelines and come back within 60 days so the city committees can review them, the planning and public works committee, and then adopt standards for the citywide implementation of these facilities.
Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Mr. President, members of the council, I rise just to commend Ms. Sikowsky for her initiative in this regard and all those other members of the council who have joined in seconding her motion. I would also like to say, this did come before the Information Technology and General Services Committee, where we began the process of trying to put in place the appropriate guidelines for aesthetic reasons and otherwise. And so what this essentially does is advance some of the work that's already been done. And it causes the planning department to revisit those standards that they refer to now. And so this essentially upgrades what is in place and moves beyond that in saying that there ought to be flexibility in the context of uniform standards that can fairly and reasonably apply to the various needs issued throughout the city. And so Ms. Sikowsky, I rise to be supportive, but essentially to say that this takes us further in in terms of the work that needs to be done. And this is really important from the vantage point that often persons who have, who find themselves in the position of renting space and so forth to companies who are in pursuit of expansion of area codes and the whole range of things that are attendant to the cellular antenna facilities. It's interesting, and not only the aesthetic issues, but this is kind of a seller beware set of circumstances because if you're not aware of what is going on, you can end up striking an arrangement that would basically be to the disadvantage of the person who's going to lease the space or lease the area and so forth on which such antennas can be built. And so I just simply think that this warrants a lot of attention. And, Mr. President, members of the council, I think we are doing the right thing, and I urge an I-vote.
If you're, do you want to be heard?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, I too strongly support Ms. Sikowsky's motion. I was just at a community meeting last night in the Hillside. And a number of people spoke about the problem that this motion addresses. The appearance of a community matters. It has an impact on quality of life. It has an impact on economic vitality. It has an impact on property values. People choose to locate in places where aesthetic values are given a priority. And Ms. Sikowsky's motion recognizes that. And I want to say, from the community standpoint, certainly last night was a good example, this approach, if we can get somewhere with it, will have broad community support from one side of the city to the other. So let's go forward.
Mr. Burnson?
Yeah, I too want to thank Cindy for bringing this forward. It's long needed. Let me just say a little bit about this, though. We have been, in cases where we have jurisdiction, we've tried to make sure that they are not offensive-looking. But that's not always the case. One of the things that people realize or maybe don't think about is the fact that some of the people that complain the most are ones that wouldn't give up their cell phones. So you have to consider that, you know? It's like people who hate automobiles but use the, won't give up the freeway, that type of situation, John. But this is something that we can develop at least a set of standards. And we can limit the, shall we say, the impact on the community because there are ways of camouflaging these types of things. Examples, some of them can look like palm trees. They can be put on the side of buildings where they don't show. There are a number of things that can be done. So I would urge the departments that are looking into this to come back with something as quickly as possible so that we can put it in place. And again, Cindy, thank you very much.
Okay, we have item 27 and 28. Prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. That's approved. Ms. Chick, you, Ms. Chick has an amendment on item 33 we have to reconsider. There are no objections, 33 is before us. Mrs. Chick?
Yes, I'd like to amend item 33 to ask the city attorney to investigate filing an amicus brief since there may be an appeal to the California Supreme Court action.
Okay. All right, you heard the amendment. Mr. Holden?
I vote.
Prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Do we have to vote again on that? Is that, 33 is amended? 33 is amended. Prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Mr. Wax?
Before I make an introduction, if I could, on Ms. Chick's motion, which we just passed, if I might, Ms. Chick, your motion could not be more timely. Your motion could not be more timely. We're in the midst of a campaign now. Unfortunately, an ordinance will take longer to draft than our current laws. So perhaps we could just amend your motion. I totally support it. But I think perhaps we could also simply call upon all of the candidates who are running for all of the various municipal offices now to voluntarily abide by the rules of full disclosure while, during the time in which we're doing this. Because I think that it's something, perhaps we could set an example that until we can draft this ordinance, that we at least call upon all of the candidates running for all of the offices to follow full disclosure on campaign literature. If I might, Mr. President, I'd like to just quickly reconsider to add that to it. And then, I also would like to make an introduction, if I might. Before we go into executive session, I did want to take a moment to introduce 36 very wonderful young people from China. They are Chinese Friendship Scouts. They are actually the China Ku Ming Friendship Scouts. They're ages 10 and 11. They're all from the Yunnan province in China, a very interesting province. It's a province in which the majority of Chinese minorities reside. They're here in the United States to promote friendship and goodwill. They are performing their native folk dances and songs to American youth. Later, I'll be making a presentation to them. But at least now, wanted to stand with their host, Sean Chen, to be recognized by the council. We welcome you in our city, and we hope that you have a wonderful, wonderful time.
Welcome, welcome to Los Angeles.
And, Mr. President, if I could, then just, this will take about a split second, I'd move that we would reconsider 33 to add that amendment and then vote on it.
All right, is there-
Excuse me, Mr. Wax, we've already reconsidered it once today. We can reconsider it tomorrow if you'd like to add that. Under council rules, you may reconsider it once during the same session.
But what would it take to suspend the council rules?
I move that we suspend the rules and simply reconsider it as an add to-
All right, is there any objection to suspension of the rules? There is?
Yeah, why you want to suspend the rules, Mr. President?
For an amendment that you would like to put in there.
What is the amendment, Mr. President?
The amendment is to call upon, while the ordinance is being drawn, which will take some time, since we're in the midst of an election now, to simply call upon all of the candidates to voluntarily adhere to open disclosure.
I think Mr. Holden would be for that.
Are you currently a candidate? I see.
Certainly willing to abide by it.
Oh, okay.
All right, if there is no- All right, on the suspension of the rules, open the roll, close the roll.
14 ayes.
All right, the rules have been suspended. On the amendment, on the amendment by Mr. Wax. The amendment is voluntary compliance of all candidates that are seeking public office this year. All right, on the amendment, if there's no objection, it'll be included on the action that we just took. So we'll open the roll on the ordinance as amended. All right, close the roll.
14 ayes.
All right, it'll be deemed adopted. Next item.
Mr. President?
Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Mr. President, I wish to make note of the fact that Ms. Weingard should be acknowledged for catching Mr. Wax off-guard when she invoked that not often utilized rule.
And we invoked the not always utilized rule, too.
That's right. So, Ms. Weingard, we need you to tell us if we're limited in terms of the number of times we can suspend the rules now.
Okay, now, we'll consider that rhetorical. All right? All right. All right, on item one, we're going into closed session. All of the people that are here, that are not here on this item, we would appreciate you. Correct? All right, everybody else will have to reset. Will have to vacate the premises. On bargaining instructions. Labor, on some labor meeting confer issues that will- Labor, on some labor meeting confer issues that were raised. Thank you very much, Mr. Holden.
Okay, we're back in open session. Can we open the doors?
They are. Yeah, it's open.
Ron?
That's what I want.
How bad could it be?
I know what I'm doing.
Okay, the council will come to order. All right, Mr. Deaton?
Mr. President, if, referring to our chart that we have.
Do we want George and Irvin up here, please? Welcome.
Good morning.
Okay.
Referring to our chart, on page eighteen, it's a modified chart, it includes two items that did not, were not included on Friday. One is the creation of area planning commission, the other is limitation of the number of appeals. And I'm going to ask Claudia Cullen from the city attorney to explain both those items to the council.
Very simply, that in the present charter, the Board of Zoning Appeals, the BZA, takes care of all the appeals from the zoning administrator. Under the new charter, there are area planning commissions, and the charter allows the council to create them by ordinance, and at least five of them, each consisting of at least five members. And the members have to, as a qualification of being appointed, live in the area of the area planning commission. They will act as the BZA does in terms of appeals from the zoning administrator, and in some cases, they will act as the first decision, first level decision-makers. They will be what, like the BZA is a quasi-judicial agency. They will hear, they will have full appeal authority to hear appeals from any order, requirement, decision interpretation, or other determination from the zoning administrator. They can make determinations that a zoning administrator, as a first level decision-maker, as a zoning administrator might, if the planning, if the council decides by ordinance to give it that authority. They can take initial jurisdiction if the ZA has failed to act, like in a transfer of jurisdiction situation. They can hear, make, by ordinance, the council can decide that they can determine applications or hear appeals related to conditional uses, or similar quasi-judicial approvals, other kinds of approvals, like we have project permits. They can also make recommendations to the council on zone changes or other legislative matters, and do anything else that the council by ordinance decides to give it. So, that takes the place of the ZA, the BZA, which now acts as one body citywide. The other, that was in section, just for your reference, in the previous, I'm sorry? Well, let me get to that. That's section ninety-nine of the present charter. The new section 563B2, which is on page nineteen of the chart that the CLA prepared, talks about the limit of the number of appeals that can be filed regarding conditional use permits or similar quasi-judicial matters. This does not apply to variances which have a separate, that have a separate procedure, but this allows people to appeal the zoning administrator's decision, and COPs and other similar matters, to the area planning commission. Original decisions of an area planning commission can be appealed to either the council or the city planning commission, however you decide it, by ordinance. But it can't have more than one level of appeal. So, if the zoning administrator appeals to the, if someone appeals a zoning administrator decision to the area planning commission, that's the end of it. It doesn't go on to council, and you can't by ordinance change that.
Please hold on just a second.
No. Now, you can, of course, under section 245, which is revision to Prop. 5, bring it to council under that. Hearing examiners, the use of hearing examiners doesn't interfere with that one step, one level of appeal process. And legislative actions will always come to council.
You've got to vote to put it on.
I'm going to vote to put it on, but I'm going to say one more time.
Okay, go ahead. We're going to, Ron, is this the only item, or you're going to go through the other items? Huh? Well, I, okay, you want to discuss this, Ms. Goldberg, you want to discuss this item?
I just wanted to, not this particular, I had two questions on this.
All right, Mr. Hernandez. And this is on this item.
Yep, and maybe someone from the commission can give me some clarity. How are the five areas designated that each commission will be overseeing? And how does that take into account population? Right now, for example, reapportionment, you know, the whole concept of one person, one vote, has become important. But I could see, but that has created differences of landmass in terms of the size of council districts. And the reality that certain council districts have a lot of landmass, that is park space, open space, and other council districts have a lot of landmass that is mixed use, industrial manufacturing, and residential. So, how are these boundaries for these five commissions going to be determined? Because we're creating a system that will be more oversight into the planning issues, but in some areas, you might not have any options.
It's left to ordinance to decide. It would be for the city council, through the ordinance process, to decide how to draw the zones, and also the number of area planning commissions.
Okay, well, is there five, or there could be more than five?
There have to be at least five. It's up to the council as to whether to have five or more.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So, Mr. Burnson here. Mr. Burnson, want to be heard on this item?
No, I've already heard all of you.
Buddy, did you want to say something? I know you've heard. If you don't want to hear, say anything.
You know, I will say something. I do have a real problem with this on the appeal process, because what you're going to be doing is making decisions that are going to be, that are going to be necessary for the city, that the city's not going to be able to get. And I just, I have a real problem with the land use issues on this thing.
Please talk, go. All right, it's very profound. All right, Ms. Chick?
Was this proposal similar to something that the council looked at in development, in the development reform process?
In the development reform process, the council was looking at a motion, I can't remember the exact language, but it was to limit the number of appeals, but I don't remember that it was exactly like this.
Okay, because, you know, I remember the discussions then, and what some of the concerns were in terms of not having the right of appeal, especially to neighborhood and citizen groups. And so, perhaps someone from one of the charter commissions can address this, because I know that one of the themes of everything that we're doing is to give the public more particip, opportunities for more participation, and to have a stronger voice. What I remember in the rejection of a similar approach in the development reform process was that the city council rejected it because they were concerned that it cut off the public's ability to bring an appeal all the way to council, so.
Laura, on your time, may I just, on this point, isn't it true that under the unified charter, that we could by ordinance determine?
It's okay, I said okay.
Is it all right?
We're actually collaborating, we're figuring out the answer.
We're doing a duo.
If you would ask about the chair, and then I'll be more than glad.
Your majesty may have a moment.
Thank you.
Isn't it true that under the unified charter, we could by ordinance state that an appeal from the area planning commissions, or the big planning commission comes automatically here?
That's correct. The unified charter provides that there's one level of appeal, but the council by ordinance can decide whether that appeal is made from the area planning commission to the citywide planning commission, or if the appeal should be directly from the area planning commission to the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Fur.
So, if the council wants to maintain.
Hear all the appeals on those kinds of matters.
Maintain the position it's taken before, we can do so through ordinance?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Msakowski.
On the same point, I think there's a little concern on the council, and justifiably so, on the question of the single appeal, because if we look at a number of cases just over the last couple of years, there have been any number of variance-approved use variant, zoning administrator-approved use variances, that have come to the council, where the council may have looked at it differently from the others, the other earlier bodies. And those cases include everything from El Mercado, to the synagogue in CD4, to a school in my district, to a bar in CD13. And I think there is some concern, because each of those cases had many, many, many citizens who asked for their right to bring the case all the way to the city council. And so, I'm concerned that those kinds of cases have been cut short in terms of the normal exhaustive appeal process that people have the administrative remedy for. Was there any other consideration on, by either or both of the charters in the conference committee, to allow that opportunity for appeals where there really are significant cases? And I guess the question I'm asking is, under the proposal today, where you say a lot of the issues are able to be decided by ordinance by the council, if the council wanted to create a special category of kinds of uses where they were, where they were considered to be overwhelming significance or region-wide significance, could the council by ordinance create something a little bit of variance with what the charter says on that one purpose-only appeal?
On the, on the first issue of variances. The unified charter actually treats variances different than other quasi-judicial approvals.
Just for your clarification, though, there are variances, which are yard variances, heights for fences, et cetera, like that, and then there are use variances, which, for instance, allow someone to use a residential zone for parking, which is a quite common occurrence. That's technically a variance, but it's a use variance, different from yard variances, and those are the kinds that are somewhat significant as they come to the council.
The unified charter provides that variances will be decided in the first case by the zoning administrator, and be appealable to the area planning commission, but that there's an exception to the one appeal rule for variances. The council by ordinance can provide that those variances, and the council could decide to limit it to use variances, for example, may be further appealed to the city planning commission or to the city council at the council discretion.
So, there is a two-level appeal if the council decides by way of ordinance, all right.
For variances, yes.
Just for variances.
Mrs. Walters?
I have questions that are continuing from last week, also in the five section. I raised the issue, I believe, about the criteria being eliminated.
Mrs. Walters, can we just take care of this item, then when we?
You want to leave that item?
Then we'll have the general discussion after we go through.
Fine.
Thank you. Mr. Fur?
I made my point earlier.
Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, members, here's a good example of what's been happening as we put together this proposed charter reform. It's like a haymaker against the head of the citizens of the city. Now, you didn't do it intentionally, because it's like that term limits thing, you didn't intend to sneak that through, but it was going to go through, and your eyes were opening, and now you begin to respond. I mean, when you start reading the small print, that's where you get the problems. For an example, the average citizen, any citizen today, can appeal at the, can protest or appeal at the zoning administrator, and voter zoning appeals, and all the way to the city council. You're taking a lot of that away. Now, this charter reform is supposed to be making government more open to the public, and you're quietly shutting it down, even when you, as you appoint the commissioners. If the commissioners don't dance to the tune of their appointed authority, it takes three force, three force of the council to overrule that, which means that instead of having a six-vote veto power, as you have to sustain the day, all you need is four. You've got to know what you're doing. You're very smart people, and you're shutting your door on the opportunity of the citizens of this community to address their needs in the government. I'm telling you. Now, this is a slick, slick, not really, it's a slick attempt to accomplish what you really want, and that is to set up an autocratic government here in the city of Los Angeles. And then, if you come out against what you're doing, someone will say, you're against reform. Yes, slick reform, yes. I think the citizen, once they understand, it would be against it. This is too much, what you're just, on this section alone, as it relates to planning, to do this to the people of this community. They understand the process very well now, and they protest, and they get things done. We just have, no, you can't appeal here, the council gives you authority to appeal there, and once, who can appeal? Can the average citizen appeal? Sure. And then, when that citizen appeals, do they appeal for everybody in that class? Or can someone else then appeal and get more hearings? Has that been addressed? I don't think so. So, that means that if one person can appeal for the class, and the person who appeals the first time can appeal with the intent of not winning the appeal. You can have developers doing that, for the purpose of accomplishing their goal and objective. You're shutting it down, shutting down government, because you're having too many loopholes here. You're shutting it down, and when it's being pointed out to you, you're still going to go forward and shut it down. Well, I would hope that by the time that it gets to the voters, if it's not cleared up, that they'll do something about it.
All right, Mr. Burnson?
Yeah, I just have to make a few more comments. You know, be quiet, Richard, will you? First of all, you have a situation where you're trying to create a strong mayor. The mayor is going to appoint these commissions. You're not going to have, you're taking away the process of appeal, or at least part of it, from the people of Los Angeles. This is a terrible, terrible mistake. I don't know if this is intentional or not intentional. In the same system, you're creating a situation where the mayor can fire or hire not only managers, but assistant managers. You're creating a situation where you're virtually going to have a dictator that's going to be able to do whatever he wants, land use-wise, in the city of Los Angeles. And I'm telling you, this is a terrible, terrible thing. I just want to ask you, did anybody from this commission ever discuss this issue with myself or any members of the planning committee on this issue? I know you didn't discuss it with me, maybe you did with Ms. Msakowski or Mr. Hernandez, but I don't know how you came to this conclusion, that you want to take away the ability of people to appeal. You're also weakening the council and everything else, and all you do here, and what you're really doing is creating a semi-dictatorship, and that's what it really amounts to.
I think there's a bit of a misunderstanding here.
Is there? Where is the misunderstanding?
Let me try to clarify.
No, I don't, I just want to answer my question. My question is, did anybody discuss with myself or any members of the planning committee on this issue, as how you should act on this issue? Yes or no?
Yes.
With who, who was it?
Khan-How spoke with us at length, and I'd like.
I said with members of the planning committee.
I don't remember, we had so many people testify to us, I would need to know, sir, could I point to you to two provisions in the charter that might help address your concern?
You're taking my time, Mr. Shermanovski.
I apologize, I do.
I just asked a simple question. Now, I just wanted to point out what this provision is doing. It's taking away.
First of all, you have a situation where you're trying to create a strong mayor. The mayor is going to appoint these commissions. You're not going to have, you're taking away the process of appeal, or at least part of it, from the people of Los Angeles. This is a terrible, terrible mistake. I don't know if this is intentional or not intentional. In the same system, you're creating a situation where the mayor can fire or hire not only managers, but assistant managers. You're creating a situation where you're virtually going to have a dictator that's going to be able to do whatever he wants land-use-wise in the city of Los Angeles. And I'm telling you, this is a terrible, terrible thing. I just want to ask you, did anybody from this commission ever discuss this issue with myself or any members of the planning committee on this issue? I know you didn't discuss it with me. Maybe you did with Mr. Mr. Kowski or Mr. Hernandez, but I don't know how you came to this conclusion that you want to take away the ability of people to appeal. You're also weakening the council and everything else in all you do here, and what you're really doing is creating a semi-dictatorship, and that's what it really amounts to.
I think there's a bit of a misunderstanding here.
Is there? Where is the misunderstanding?
Let me try to clarify.
No, I don't want, I just want to answer my question. My question is, did anybody discuss with myself or any members of the planning committee on this issue, as how you should act on this issue? Yes or no?
Yes.
With who? Who was it?
Khan-How spoke with us at length.
I said with members of the planning committee.
I don't remember. We had so many people testify to us. I would need to know, sir, could I point to you to two provisions in the charter that might help address your concern?
You're taking my time, Mr. Shermanovski.
I apologize.
You know, I just asked a simple question. Now, I just wanted to point out what this provision is doing. It's taking away a, at least 50% of the right of the people to appeal a land-use decision in their neighborhood that is going to be a commission that's appointed by the mayor, that is a mayor that can hire or fire the chief of that department or the assistant chief of that department, and after it goes to that commission, it can't be appealed further. This is a travesty and a terrible mistake.
Might I respond and clarify by pointing to you a couple of provisions in the charter?
Mr. Samoruski, go ahead.
Just very quickly, sir, if you look at Section 562 on page 106, where it says, "Appeals process," it says, "An agreed person may appeal a variance decision of the zoning administrator to the area planning commission. The grant of a variance by the area planning commission may be further appealed to the city planning commission or the council is prescribed by ordinance." Sir, as a result, the council could make sure that it was available to all appeals. And furthermore, what hasn't been mentioned this morning, if I could direct your attention to page 240, Section 245D on page 26, this says that when the city council exercises an appeal, it continues to have the mandatory authority of the current Prop. 5. It specifically says, "The council shall not be limited to veto of actions of the city planning commission or area planning commissions, but subject to time limits and other limits of the section, after voting to bring the matter before it, shall have the same authority to act on a matter as that originally held by the city planning commission or area planning commission." Thus, the appellate authority of the city council is left to it by ordinance, and it retains the same mandatory authority that it has today.
Ms. Goldberg?
Then I don't understand the language that's here on the page, because in the page 19, about halfway down in parentheses, it says, "Decisions by an area planning commission on appeal from a decision of the zoning administrator are not subject to appeal."
Councilwoman, that section that, on page 19, does not deal with variances, which is what Commissioner Chimerinsky was speaking of. Variances are handled separately.
Okay. So what's that referred to?
This is conditional use permits and all other quasi-judicial kinds of determinations in the land use area.
Then we have the same problem. Because the fact of the matter is, the public has come to believe, and I happen to support that, that they have a right to appeal any land use issue regardless of what it is, eventually to the council, where they may lose. And we all know they lose sometimes a fair amount of the time, and they win sometime, depending on their ability to mobilize their neighbors and so forth. If we're not going to, on conditional use permits, which are what kinds of things, oh my God, those are the most sensitive, if they can't come to the council on that, they're going to perceive this, as I do, as a major loss.
But you can by-
A major loss.
You can by ordinance allow these to come to council, but you just can't allow some to come to coun-, I mean, you have to make a category of-
Which ones can we not allow by council to come to coun-, by ordinance to come to council? Which ones can we not allow?
You could take them all, but the question is whether you would want to have all of them come to council. In other words, there will be no intervening appellate body. Now, things come to some intermediate appellate body, and sometimes that's the end of it, and the council does not hear it.
Well, I can only tell you how my constituents will respond to this. They will respond to this, whether it was intentional or not, or whether it's even real or not. They're going to respond to this line that they have lost a major right to appeal to the council. Right now, they have that right, I believe, absolutely intact. This says, "The council has to take an action to guarantee that right." Is that, am I reading that correctly? Okay. Well, I think they're going to perceive that as a major loss, because right now, the council does not have to take an action to hear an appeal. We have to hear it if it's an appeal, whether we like it or not.
Well, you can set this up by ordinance, or you can use the new 245, the Prop. 5, the 240 section, 245.
Okay.
So there are two ways-
I understand that, but whenever this council has to act in order to hear the appeal, people are not going to like that in my neighborhood. I will tell you that right now, because that council doesn't have a choice right now. Right now, they have to come here. And as a result of that, people believe they have one more chance, if they didn't win, to come and speak to the council. And now, the council will have to make that decision. I think that's a big loss.
Mr. Hernandez?
I just want you to address something. We're dealing with the zoning administrator's office in regards to nuisance abatement processes, and the fact that all this fact-finding goes on in order to set conditions on certain establishments that might be declared a nuisance. Now, the community automatically is moving against a lot of these establishments. So a lot of facts have to be presented to the zoning administrator, then they set conditions. In this case, the zoning administrator would continue to set those kinds of conditions?
Yes, you can continue to have a process where the zoning administrator is first-
But that we'd have to establish by ordinance? Or would that, would this continue in that essence?
The current ordinance that allows the zoning administrator hear those and make those determinations could-
So this does not change that?
This doesn't change that. It only changes the appeal.
Now, once that happens, and there's an appeal filed, now it goes to this five-member board?
It could. You could decide that it goes here, or you could decide that it goes to the city planning commission.
We, the council, could make that decision.
You by ordinance.
Okay. But under the, what's before us right now, and again, I'm trying to understand, because what you're saying, things are going to have to be, can be changed after it passes, and I'm trying to find out what-
There will be, there would need to be a lot of procedural ordinances adopted to implement the changes in this part of the charter.
Essentially, the situation is, as I understand it, is that the zoning administrator will make the decision. Then by ordinance, then you have to decide where that appeal will go to. It could go to the area planning commission, to the planning commission, or directly to the council. And you would decide by ordinance, general categories of all these appeals will go to A, or all these general types of appeals will go to B.
Now, if the zoning-
But not individually.
Yeah. If the commission, because, makes certain decisions that hold the city legally liable, what authority does the city attorney have to prohibit that commission from doing that?
We don't have that authority now, and we won't under the new charter.
Well, you don't have it under the council.
We don't have it with respect to any decision-maker in the city in land use matters. We advise, just like we advise the council, but we have no authority to do anything like that.
The authority to resolve an appeal, if by ordinance, would, if you had sent all these appeals to A, then A would have the authority to resolve those appeals. And the city attorney would advise as to the legality and properness of the decision.
In response to Mr. Burnson, there, I think, had been discussion by members of the charter commission about the general issue of the planning commissions and the area planning commissions, but I think that the issue on the appeal came up at the last minute and was being adjusted, and I don't think there was discussion, other than an attempt to try to readjust. For members of the charter commission, I'd like to let you know how I think you've put the city council and the public in a little bit of a catch-22 on the appeals. The effort and the issue of creating area planning commissions was an effort to create local ability, local control, local access on local decisions. But as you create a category where the council shall decide, let me take one that's going to be coming to the council, and not to talk about the merits of it, but to talk about the process. We have an issue under conditional use, dealing with sanitary landfills. By way of what you've done, the council will have to, by ordinance, either, I think it will happen before this comes to the, the charter goes into effect, but we're the charter in effect, we would have to make a choice of whether or not that first appeal of a zoning administrator's decision goes to the area planning council, which the people there would demand, because they would say this is a local issue, it affects us, we want our input, or to the regional commission, which arguably, this is a regional matter. But we would have to decide of eliminating one or the other if we wanted the matter to get to council. And I think no one here would say that a matter of that magnitude ought not to come to the council. But you have, by way of this one-shot-only appeal, eliminated one level of those appeal processes, which I think are all viable, all important, but to say to the city council, "You tell the public that either they don't get their area commission to rule on this and give their input, or you determine that the regional commission shall not, or you determine that the city council shall not." Each are important, and I think in a whole overall process, would be valuable and viable, but we will have to make that choice and exclude one of those in a very deliberative public input process.
Okay, then, no one else wants to be heard on the next item, Mr. Deaton?
That concludes all the ones in 500 pursuant to the process that we used on Friday. I think in order would be questions on anything in 500 at this stage.
Okay. Mrs. Walters?
I don't think we did complete all items in 500. I still have some here that are checked in 500. I think we ended, I was asking questions about 508 in 500. And that's where it provides that the, for the mayor's merit-pay authority for general managers, and he gives the mayor the authority only to evaluate the general managers and set their compensation, whereas now, at the mayor's behest, it's done jointly between council and the mayor's office. So that restricts that only to the mayor. Was there some particular thinking that went into that, and I'd like to know what it is? And I don't want you to answer yet, because I want to raise another question here. On Section 582 on page, the old page 18, which would be today's page-
Twenty.
Okay. Which is today's page 20. Thank you, Mr. Deaton. This talks about creating a director of public works appointed by the mayor who acts as a public works general manager. And I'm sorry we didn't get to this on Friday, because-
Are you really?
From what I understand here, this does exactly that. Last week, I had the opportunity to sit in on an interview process of a person-to-be, the general manager of engineering, and I raised this question, that if he took the job, he would be working under this public director, public works general manager, and overall, general manager for public works. And I was told by one of the mayor's people who was in that meeting, that that was no longer the case, that the commissions had revised this issue and only had, had limited the scope of authority of this person, but I don't see it revised in here. And I want to know if you, in the last rewrites, was it revised? And I'm particularly concerned about number seven, where it says, "Oversees the functions of Departmental Accounting and Management Employee Services," and "Any bureau's concerned, charged with performing these functions." Now, as I understood it from the mayor's office, it was going to be, number seven was going to be the limiting guideline. Now, that's all this person would do, if I understood them correctly. But here, it says, he has a wide scope, he or she will have a wide scope of authority, from contracts to day-to-day administration, on these other general managers. So I'd like to know what, what the situation is.
Can we have that answer? The linear time is up.
Well, as I read the unified charter, they, it oversees the functions of the current Bureau of Accounting and Managed Employee Services bureaus, however, has broad authority to recommend to the board relative to long-term and short-term public works plans and programs, and is kind of, although not having direct responsibility for sanitation, engineering, and street services, would have an overall management responsibility. For example, number three was supervised and management construction and maintenance work authorized by the board, unless that's just authorized. It appears to me that the intent was broad. Seven does limit it to direct responsibility, direct supervision to those functions, however, there seems to be broad responsibility included in the, in the position.
Mr. Deaton, your voice is trailing off. Would you-
Well, as I explained on Friday, I have, the difficulty with this is you have a full-time board appointed by the mayor-
Right, you have a full-time board.
Responsible for management of the bureau, of the department.
And full-time general managers.
Full-time general manager selected by the mayor, responsible for public works, and then you have contract administration, engineering, sanitation, street lighting, and street services, who also have a general manager in charge of them that are selected by the mayor.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Gold, Ms.?
Well, the question goes to, does seven limit this person's authority, as I understood it had been limited to? Or is this a person going to truly have all the authority enumerated here from one to nine?
Can we answer that?
Well, clearly, it'll have the responsibility of one through nine.
I think the commission's ought to comment on what their intent was. They went through a number of public hearings, received a lot of input from the mayor staff and from other people.
Right. I would appreciate that very much.
Councilmember seven is a specific delegation of responsibility with respect to those existing functions, but it's true, one, one through nine do give that authority, but in each of those cases, it's under the direction of the board. So the board is still a managing commission, and those parameters enforce the rules and the regulations adopted by the board, for example, in number one, you have the directions coming from the board, but specifically, a specific grant of supervisory authorities over accounting and management employee services.
So the council, then, this whole operation of public works is entirely under the office of the mayor, with no council input at all?
It has not changed, to that extent, it is not different. The only addition here is the, is the appointment of a, a person whose responsibility is going to be to directly coordinate, through the policy set by the board, the activities of the bureau chiefs. It's been something that has been recommended for, for a long time, and in different ways, and it is true that we could have eliminated the board of public works as well. We decided that that was not the appropriate course. But this is a coordinating role under the board of public works. It does not change the relationship with the council.
Ms. Goldberg?
We're discussing the 500 series.
Okay. I just have one question in the 500 series. On the addendum sheet that was handed out under number four, it says, "Section 506C, replace existing provision with, subject to 373, any action." I just don't understand what number four says on this addendum sheet.
Sure.
And would you just, first of all, explain it? Because it takes out, "Subject to approval by mayor or council," unless that's what "Subject to 373" means. But if it does, why didn't you just say that? I don't know. What does it, what does it mean?
Let me explain the-
It's a very convoluted sentence.
Well, it is exactly the language from the existing charter. Word for word comes from Section 81 of the existing charter. The decision was made with regard to contracts, franchises, and leases, to continue the current charter, just with some modifications not affected here. Section 373 is the provision that requires council approval of contracts, which why it says, "Subject to 373." And what this provision deals with, both in Section 81 of the current charter, and here in 506C, 82 of the current charter, I'm sorry, what it deals with is the authority of a general manager to enter into contract. And as I say, this is exactly word for word, Section 82 of the existing charter.
So what does, I don't all understand everything in the existing charter either, so maybe you can still help me. It says, "Any action by the department created in the charter authorizing the acquisition or sale of real property." Is that subject to mayor and council approval or not?
Absolutely. Pursuant to Section 373.
Okay, that's fine. Just yes or no? And then what does the sentence mean? "Reasonably valued in excess of such monetary limitation as provided by ordinance." What does that mean?
The ordinance will prescribe the authority here, and the ordinance can prescribe it both in terms of time and also in terms of dollar amount.
Thank you.
Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, this section that you're discussing, can I ask for, you don't ask consent to talk about another little section that we skipped over? And that's one dealing with the term limit. And as I speak on it...
The what?
Term limits. As I speak on it, I want Mr. Brody and the League of Women Voters to approach the microphone, please. And I'm going to ask them one question. Mr. Brody and the representatives from the League of Women Voters, are you in favor of abolishing term limits, yes or no?
Go ahead.
As far as this is concerned, the answer is no.
All right, what's your position, ma'am?
There is no issue of that in the Unified Charter.
Yes, go ahead.
Right, I'm in favor of abolishing term limits, but unfortunately, it's not raised in the charter, which doesn't mean that it couldn't be raised after the charter passed.
That sounds like an excellent answer. But included in this proposal, as I see it, and I made mention of it, I think, last Friday, on page 14, it says, "Section 206," it talks about... I'm sorry, section 205... no, 206. You shall abolish... term limits would be abolished. When you start reading the exception, oh, 205, it says that the mayor, city attorney, comptroller, and members of the council shall hold their office for a term of four years. The terms of all those officials shall commence on the first day of July, etc., except where a vacancy is different, 206. No person may serve more than two terms of office for mayor. No person may serve more for the city attorney's office, for the comptroller, or for the city council. These limitations on the number of terms of office shall not apply to any unexpired term to which a person is elected or appointed if the remainder of the term is less than one-half of the full term of the office. You came in last week, you asked us to support the charter reform. The charter reform in that form at the time would have abolished term limits. And my question to you, have you... did you read it? And if you read it, did you understand it? And you... that's... you don't have to answer the question, you can just... in your own mind, you can do that. I would like to have the planning commissions to do it. Not the planning commission, but the charter commissions to respond to that.
Yes, councilmember, if the question is, is there anything in section 206 that changes existing law regarding term limits? The answer is no, that this is identical.
What about the exception? Why have the exception in?
That exception is already in the existing charter.
No, wait a minute, wait a minute. That's existing charter. But this exception replaces the existing charter. And when you replace the existing charter with this one, you're saying that those people who are in the last two years of their term, less than two years remaining, are exempted? And that everybody here would have served two terms, exempted for the terms and conditions of the proposed charter, number one. And number two, they could not just run for one, two more years, but for two more terms?
If a member... yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
They can run for two more terms. And if you really want to clarify that and give the intent that no one should have more than two terms, then so state it without exception, because exception should not apply. This is another dirty trick.
No, let him answer the question, Mr. Holden.
Yes, under current law, under the charter, if a member is completing an unexpired term for less than one-half of the full term of office...
Such as Mr. Fure.
Yes, then they are entitled to serve two full terms. And that is the current law, and that is picked up in the Unified Charter as well.
Mr. President, they thought it was so necessary to clarify that because they have an addendum out. It's misleading, and I think it was designed... it was the intent to do just that.
Mr. Alatari?
Mr. President and members, you know, I have, you know, some serious questions about many of the aspects, but I believe that we have responsibility to put the charter on the ballot, regardless of what I may think of it or the like. But I think that that is the... that is the only responsible thing to do. I have some very serious concerns about some of the issues that were raised by the firefighters. I read... we talked about the problem I have with reapportionment commission, which I think it's just... makes no sense. The question of planning and planning decisions and the replacement of the BCA with this commission and the manner in which that we go about it, I think is problematic. But those are things that I have a disagreement on. But I think that this body has a responsibility, and the responsibility is to place it on the charter. Whether we agree with what the bodies, both the elected as well as the appointed charter commission, did, they spend the time. And I think they did a outstanding job, very dedicated, dedicated staff on both sides. And I think both chairs should be commended on the work that they have done, irrespective of how I may feel about the end result. I think that people of Los Angeles deserve to be put... have a choice of changing the charter, if that is the decision that they make. I think there's some outstanding changes that are being advocated. I think that it is only appropriate for us to respond and to respond in affirmative manner to put it on the charter.
Mr. Hernandez?
You know, I'm looking at section 514, and I haven't had a hard time computing two-thirds of 15. I'm having a hard time figuring out three-fourths of 15. Could you explain that provision to me? It's dealing with the transfers of powers in regards to the mayor's veto or the council's trying to overcome that veto. But it says it would take three-fourths of the council to overcome that veto. How does that work out?
Councilman, throughout the charter currently, the current charter, there are requirements for a three-quarter vote from time to time by the council to override an action by the mayor. So that concept of a three-quarter vote is not a new one. It, as I understand it, that has been decided to be 12 votes in this council. What this particular provision does is allow the mayor to put something before you with respect to a transfer of powers that has... that brings into play that same requirement of a three-quarter vote to overturn it. But the three-quarter vote itself is something that has been in operation for many, many years.
But not in regards to a veto?
Yes, if the mayor vetoes an action by the council, for instance, the transfer authority from one department to another, as you have right now under 32.1, in order to still put that effect, the council has to pass it by a three-quarter vote. That's the current charter, and that remains after... in the new charter as well.
So then, in that instance, we haven't had many of those, have we, Mr. Deaton?
I... I don't know. No, we've had ITA, General Services, probably five or six times have we exercised that particular charter section in the last 15 years.
And what I'm interested in, how does this change currently the charter?
The change gives the mayor the opportunity to present something to the council as a whole for the council to consider. So it gives the mayor an opportunity to present something to the council directly and requires the council to address that issue within 45 days of the submittal by the mayor.
Right, but when we're talking about transfers of duties of departments, so for example, street lighting, if we want to transfer it from public works to an authority, he would then present that concept to the council, and we would have 45 days in which to act?
That's correct. He wouldn't present a concept, he actually would have to present all the necessary ordinances, et cetera. And then the ordinance would come before the council. The council would have 45 days to do one of two things, either pass it... well, three things. They could act on it, they could fail to act, and it would... within 45 days would become effective, or with eight votes, turn it down.
And then if he was to veto it, then we would need to come back with three-fourths to overcome the veto.
Right, but if he hadn't actually presented it, it would not seem likely that he would veto it.
Yeah, and then the other section, I just have one more question. I was dealing with the qualifications for commissioners. And I'm dealing with some of the issues that we talk about nowadays. You've presented some of the things that should be looked at. For example, you talk about diversity. There is no provisions for compliance in that regard, is there?
No.
Are you referring, councilmember, to diversity in commission appointments, for example? Yes, there was a decision to make that a broad statement of a goal and target, but to not set forward strict formulas that would have to be complied with.
So if there's no compliance, there's really nothing we can do?
No, right? Intentional, right? What's that? Right.
Councilman, section 501e does say that the mayor, the council, and other appointing authorities shall strive to make his overall appointments to appointed boards, commissions, or advisory bodies reflect the diversity of the city, including but not limited to communities of interest, neighborhoods, ethnicity, race, gender, age, and sexual orientation. Unfortunately, under the California Constitution, under Prop. 209, it'd be very difficult to make that enforceable.
Thank you. Fure?
Mr. President, if there are others who have more questions, I'll defer to them while I'm prepared to speak to the motion.
Anybody want to speak anymore on the charter?
We're just finished with 500, we have 600 to go.
Okay, let's do the 600s.
I'll wait.
What about the amendments?
We're on 600. I'll run through them very quickly. Currently, general managers are appointed and removed by the mayor, subject to appointment and removal by the council by majority vote. For proprietary departments, the commission of each of the proprietary departments will appoint the general manager, subject to the mayor and council confirmation. The commission will remove a general manager, subject to a mayor orial confirmation. Also, currently, evaluation is done by the mayor and the council on the proprietary departments. The commission will be making the evaluation and merit pay decisions within the council established range, as is the case with the other general managers. But in this case, it's the commission instead of the mayor. In both the cases of the Los Angeles Airport Police and the Los Angeles Port Police, those will be under the exclusive and autonomous control of the Department of Airports and Harbors respectfully.
Go ahead, Mr. Deaton, don't pay any attention to the...
They're just police, I think, right? And then in... on section 802, Mr. Alatari's favorite is the establishment of a redistricting commission for the Board of Education. Commission members are appointed by the... each member of the Board of Education, four by the council president and four by the mayor. Item 9... area 900... excuse me. Section 900 creates a Department of Neighborhood Empowerment and citywide system of neighborhood councils. There is a board going on to 902. Page 22 establishes a Board of Neighborhood Commissioners, consisting of seven commissioners, a general manager of the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, which would be subject to section 508 of general managers. 905 satisfies the implementation of neighborhood councils. Within one year, the establishment of the department. Six months afterwards will be a presentation of the plan to the council. If the implementing ordinances are not adopted within six months, they will become automatically effective. And 907 provides for an early warning system of notices to provide actions by the council, council committees, and commissions. And requires neighborhood council to monitor the delivery of city services and have meetings with responsible officials of city departments. 911 provides for mayor and council allocate funding to neighborhood councils in somewhat the same fashion as we currently do for the Ethics Commission. And increases number of positions exempted... oh, then, section 1000 is the exempt position process. Each... there's addition of assistant general managers and deputy directors to each city office and department, and two additional positions in the comptroller's office for deputy comptroller. 101a5 exempts all deputy chiefs of the chief of police... of the deputy chiefs of the police department. And 150 positions continue to be exempt from civil service in section 101b. However, the process for exempt positions have been modified under the current chart... under the Unified Charter. The mayor recommends to the council setting forth the necessary educational experience, et cetera, for the position, and describes the circumstances. Within 10 meeting days, the council may disapprove by two-thirds vote the request of the mayor. And if so failing, the recommendation becomes effective. 101b4 enables the council by ordinance to increase the maximum number of positions... exempt positions to no more than 1% of the regularized authorized positions in the city 15 positions are continued to be exempt in the Department of Water and Power, but 10 have been added to be shared between the Department of Airports and Harbor. And 1008 provides for the eligible list to be... a civil service list to be extended and may delegate to the general manager personnel the same authority for entry-level positions in accordance with civil service rules. One, referring to your addendum sheet, the preamble has... I understand there's been an agreement to strike the word equitable from the equitable distribution of government resources. And with that, I think there's all the changes to delete the word equitable. It now says, "We, the people of the City of Los Angeles, in order to establish a responsive, effective, and accountable government through which all voices in our diverse society can be heard, to provide fair representation and equitable distribution of government resources in a safe, harmonious environment based on the principles of liberty and equality, do enact this charter." The word equitable has been deleted. That meets your approval. The two commissions.
All right. Mr. Deaton, are you done with your presentation at this point? The chair recognizes Mr. Savornage.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. The first question that I do have is that in the preamble, since it's the last thing that was mentioned, why was the word equitable left out or removed?
Yes, that was my recommendation.
From the city attorney's office?
Yes, because the requirement that there be an equitable distribution of resources can be construed to be, in the subsequent action, to be construed to be a mathematical... mathematically precise distribution among the various parts of the city. We don't have that currently, that's not the situation now. There are inequities, for example, some would call it, in the distribution of parks, libraries, and other resources. By deletion of that... of the word equitable, it will read to provide fair representation and distribution of government resources, meaning fair distribution of government resources.
Okay, thank you. The other question that I have is in regards to the Los Angeles Port Police. I believe in the wording of the charter document itself correctly states what the role of the port police under the jurisdiction of the harbor department shall be, and they shall serve as the policing agency or of the harbor jurisdiction. Words on the worksheet here, incorrect language was used. And I just want to clarify, is that the word that is in the charter document itself, rather than the worksheet, is the wording that we are using for the purposes of bringing forth the issue to the voters? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Also, the question that I do have in regards to the section 604a, which is on page 124, and 604b on page 124, in regards to the process of hiring and firing a general manager for the proprietary departments, which is harbor, water, and power, and the Department of Water and Power, correct? It remains? One of the issues that right now, the way the charter has it, is that for the mayor to hire and/or fire general managers in those three positions, is that the mayor appoints, the council confirms. The mayor removes, the council has to approve. What you're proposing is, is that the Water and Power Commission, the Harbor Commission, and the Airport Commission would hire a general manager, rather than that person being a mayoral appointee, and that the mayor would have to concur and the council concur. What happens if the mayor and the council do not agree? How about if you have the commission appoint someone and the mayor not agree? Or the mayor appoints someone and the council not agree? Let's say you get two out of three. So then what happens?
The general manager is not confirmed.
Okay, so walk me through the process. The Board of Airport Commissioners hires a new general manager for the Department of Airports. After the Personnel Department does a nationwide search, as on occasion we do now, or could they pick a candidate out of a hat?
They do it pursuant to that search.
Okay. Okay, so they go ahead and conduct an executive search, and the Board of Airport Commissioners goes and appoints the general manager. And so now, what process would it take from there? Would a file go concurrently to the mayor's office as well as to the council?
I would think so, yes.
I mean, because the council could act to confirm the commission's recommendation, but then the mayor say no. So what is the process? Does it go from the commission to the mayor to the council? Does it go from the commission concurrently to the council and to the mayor? I mean, what I'm trying to avoid is a lot of wheel spinning, that if one isn't going to appoint, then why should the other even consider confirming?
Yes, council member, whether or not it went to them simultaneously or in order, the confirmation of both, it would be required for the general manager to be confirmed, so...
Within a certain period of time?
That is not specified. There's not a period of time specified in here.
Okay, well, that's one of my problems. So if the commission goes ahead and appoints, and there is no specified time in which both the mayor and the council have to approve that appointment, the council could go ahead and hold a hearing or hold a meeting to appoint, to approve the commission's appointment, and then the mayor could wait six months if he wanted to, to say whether or not that person was good or not good. Or concurrently, the council could do the same thing. It's what I'm saying, is that if we are going to appoint general managers because of a vacancy, it should be timely, and there should be some type of a time requirement, that within a certain period of time, both the mayor and the council have to act or not act to confirm that general manager of three, of three of the most important departments in the city, in the city family.
All right, thank you. Mr. Alatorre?
I'll push my button again. Well, I'd like to hear an answer from the, from the commissions in regards to, into their line of thinking of why there's no time limit. There must be a reason why the commissions did not put a time limit over whether council or the mayor could approve general managers of the proprietary commission's appointments.
My understanding is, and I see Mr. Comrie would like to speak...
Somebody answer it.
Right now, that's done by ordinance, and a procedural ordinance would not be inconsistent with that going forward as well.
There's nothing in the charter now. So this is parallel to the way the current system works. Generally, you've got to keep in mind that the commission is appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the council. We would assume they would work closely with the mayor and council in their search and selection process.
If I might respond, that isn't exactly the case. The existing charter has, by ordinance, hiring and firing and discipline that is established by ordinance. The provision of ordinance is in the charter. There is no provision for ordinance in this charter, and an ordinance, a procedural ordinance would have no effect.
I'll push my button again, Mr. President.
Mr. Alatorre.
Some people are talking about doing it away the mayor's office, but that's not even, that shouldn't be discussed right now. To president members, could I just ask, what is it, on this reapportionment commission? Now, what is the difference between, is it the same basic makeup? Mayor appoints X number, president appoints X number, advisory, is that correct?
It's advisory. In the case of the, of the Board of Education, each member of the Board of Education has one, the mayor has four, and the president of the council has four.
So it'll be a rather large body.
In the case of the councils, each council member has an appointment. My recollection is the mayor had three, the city attorney and the controller also had an appointment, as did the...
I thought this was supposed to be separation of, I mean, why is it that, that, isn't this legislative responsibility, not an executive responsibility, is it? On redistricting?
I guess they wanted the executive to advise.
All right. Now, all of them are going to have independent staffs, is that correct?
That's correct.
And, and their recommendation is advisory, is that what it is?
That is correct.
And then the city, then the city council still does the Board of Education, redistricting? And that is, now, maybe, how did you, maybe you could tell me what you envision, being that it was only going to be advisory, what you envision by this advisory committee or on redistricting, when their recommendation could kind of just be discarded and move with whatever has historically been the practice, maybe?
Council member, I think I could say that the intention of the commissions is that this advisory commission would operate to gather expertise and knowledge and make proposals to the city council, with the hope that if the quality of the work done by the commission was compelling, and if there was widespread public interest in the process, as shown through public hearings and feedback that was brought in, that that would not only assist the council in making its fundamental decision, which has not changed by this, that the council would do that, but that in addition, it could very well be that the council would adopt a number of the recommendations, some or all the recommendations of such an advisory commission. But I think that your concern, which is certainly well taken, that if it's just purely advisory, general advice in some way, that might not be so useful, but to the extent that these commissions could gather expertise and draw in public involvement at the same time, it may turn out that it is of great assistance to the council in meeting its obligations under redistricting.
But there's nothing that this body is going to do that isn't presently done now. I mean, what more can they do than what a legislative body does now? Which is, and I recognize that there are horror stories about how redistricting historically, you know, had, had been taking place in the seventies and, and thereabouts and prior to that. But what I'm trying to understand is, you know, there is, there are public hearings throughout the city prior to, and then there's at least an allowance for, once that the plan is adopted. I mean, you want to get broad input, and, you know, this can be a real costly measure, being, you know, because you don't, you can't accumulate this wisdom and this expertise and the hearings and everything that would be required for anything. There's a cost involved in that. And, you know, I guess I, I mean, I just have a fundamental problem, especially when it's just advisory, and it can be just discarded. And that creates, that'll create even more apprehension on the part of the general public.
Thank you, Mr. Alatorre. Thank you. Ms. Calanter?
Thank you. I wanted to ask some questions about the Department of Neighborhoods. This is a, as I understand it, this is a, a new city department will be created with a general manager and a commission to oversee it, and a staff, assistant general managers, and all the rest of that stuff. And they will come up with a series of criteria that presumably their commission will adopt, that will set out, in essence, who is fit to be the neighborhood advisory council. Now, I have a problem with that to begin with, but just skipping over that for the moment. What happens if there are two groups in a given, the same given geographic area, that both want to be the neighborhood advisory council? They're both open to all, they both meet all the criteria that the, the department and all the bureaucrats in the department set out, but now we have two of them that say, I want to be the, the neighborhood advisory council. If they all, if they both meet the criteria, it would seem that they are both entitled, or three or 10 of them, if there are 10 of them, they are all entitled to be the neighborhood advisory council. So my question is, is there anything that encourages or prevents having more than one? Who sets the budget for this department? And is there any limit on, for example, with the, with the Ethics Commission, there is something in the charter, in the amendment, that says that the Ethics Commission decides how much it needs, and the council has to approve it, and it gets approved? So who's, is there any sort of limitation on this, and where does this money, who decides how much money has to go to this department? Who decides how the department's money is allocated among the councils, if indeed you have, in some neighborhoods you have one, in some neighborhoods you have two? And who decides where that money comes from? Because if it's coming off the police and fire budget, or the parks and the libraries, I think that some of the other neighborhood councils may have a problem about it.
Let me do your latter question, and then your former question. The city council decides through the budget process the amount of money, and will of course decide where it comes from. I here would direct your attention to Section 911, which is on page 162, where it says, "The mayor and council shall appropriate funds for the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment." The only resemblance to the Ethics Commission is that the money is appropriate, in essence, a year in advance.
Okay, but so then, Erwin, go, go to what happens if there are more neighborhood councils? Is it, is there any reason why there can't be two?
The charter says, and again, I'd start with the language, it says in Section 904E, "The regulation shall establish the procedure and criteria for recognition or certification of neighborhood councils."
Right.
And the idea here is that a plan will be developed that will include specifics as to how neighborhood councils will be recognized. That plan will be presented to the city council, which then has the opportunity to enact it in ordinance or revise it. And it's that plan that would answer your question. How do you determine who is the neighborhood council? How do you deal with whether there's more than one?
Okay, okay, I got you. Now, but what I don't understand, following all of that, is how that's really any different, except for this whole new department and elaborate, and new commission, and new department, and general managers and all that. How that's any different from the situation we have today, where groups in every neighborhood, if they choose to, define themselves as representing some portion of the community, go to the government, they advise us whether we like it or not, they expect to be listened to whether we like it or not, and we have to listen to them, because they're our voters. So what's, I mean, what I'm concerned about here, actually, just not to hide anything, is that by establishing all these formal criteria, we may wind up, in fact, saying that if you haven't met all these criteria and been certified through this set of criteria in the Department of Neighborhoods, that you're not fit to advise the city council. And my constituents don't want to be told they're not fit to advise me. They are going to advise me, no matter what.
All right, thank you, Ms. ... Did you want to respond to that, or?
Only to, only to say that nothing would permit anybody from advising the city council as they do today. I think that the one difference may be...
We've got a lot of advice.
I think maybe that's the, that's, that's the answer, but that's, that's the way it is.
Mrs. Walters?
This is not on the neighborhood councils. This is on a prior Section 671, Section 680. I have correspondence here from the Executive Secretary Building Trades Council, and some other people as well, that raises concern about those sections that give the Department of Water and Power authority to enter into any private sector business that they so Is that what we want to do? And what are, what do you see as the impact of that?
If I could comment briefly, then the commission will take over. I believe that's existing language. It was passed a few years ago to help the department cope with deregulation. It's not new by this charter commission. It exists in the charter right now.
Okay, so you don't see any particular impact from that in this new environment?
No, this was debated by the council a number of years ago, and we went into deregulation and put it in. They, this commission has not changed it. It was not their intent to make any change.
All right. Then, back to the Public Works section that I raised, on page 117 of the book, here, under Section 582. As I look at this book that I have, much of this language is new language. It was not existing in the charter before. And it raises, continues to raise concerns here. Talks about this in Section H, recommending to the board about the annual budget. Now, departments have been making their budgets and putting them together and bringing them. Do you see that changing with this new language?
No, I don't. I see the, the director, though, will be making a recommendation to the board, based on recommendations coming through the bureaus, and that still would come to the council.
All right. We had a conversation here last week about the budgetary process, about general managers informing, that the charter calls for informing the council at the same time it goes to the mayor. This says nothing about that, and the departments would be reviewed and down, whatever the, this general manager wanted to do to them, before it ever came to the council or the mayor. But then, as Mr. Deaton says, they're all mayoral appointees. The general managers, the Board of Public Works, and this super general manager.
Under the current situation, I think the charter provision that we talked about last, the last time, that requires those department recommend, requests being sent to the council at the same time as the mayor, under a managing commission, they come from the managing commission currently. So the managing commission would be required to give their budget requests to the council at the same time as they give it to the mayor, and that would not change, is my understanding.
Because they don't do it now.
Well, the charter requires them to do it now.
And so you don't see that changing?
No, I think that if you want, you have to ask the CLA, but currently, the charter says that that is to go to you, and that would continue.
They, they've directly paralleled the language that exists now, that a simultaneous copy should come to the mayor and the council, from each department.
Mrs. Walters?
Yes.
You have to press your button again. Mr. Wax? Your name was on there. Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, I was going to move the previous question, but more people want to talk.
Yeah, that's right.
But instead of doing that, then I was there...
You don't have to, though.
Mr. President, I think that we beat this dead horse to death, number one. Number two, it's dead already. They just don't know it. Number two, Mr. President, we, I'm going to commend the members of the commission and the staff for doing the best job they could do under the circumstances. It was a crash program, and you know what they say about haste? It makes weight, make waste, and, but that's not fault of yours. You're working in a strict timeline, and you are to be commended. I think that we have indicated, at least by examples, that there is some flaws. The voters require that this be discussed, charter reform, and placed before them and put in the ballot. Certainly something we're going to do. I don't think it's good enough to be approved, and I would vote no, except for the fact that if you don't have enough votes to get it in the ballot, I will vote to put it in the ballot in order to complete the process, and give the voters an opportunity to go up or down on this issue. But you know in advance what my views are. But I will say this, I would say 75-plus percent of what you're recommending, there are a lot of good things here. And should it go down the tubes, as I hope and expect that it will, then we'll take that 75% with your support already. I would like to call you back to the board, the table, and say, all right, let's get down to serious brass tacks, and let's make it happen, and do it, and put it in the ballot once again. Because I think when you start taking the kind of power and influence away from the public, and at the same time saying they're going to have more power and influence, that's, pretty soon they're going to see through that. I just talked to a homeowners association, Hillside. He says, in order to make the findings, you don't need five anymore, you just need one. I've not read those details, but they nevertheless are in there. When you start getting homeowners association reading the fine print, when you start getting unions reading the fine print, and the average citizen reading the fine print, and say, the fine print is too fine, is defined in such a way that we're out, we're not in, and it's be no reflection on you. It should not be any reflection on you as a staff person or this commission. You did the best job that you could do in a crash program, and that's in fact what it really was. And there will be changes. Changes are inevitable. We will modify the charter. That's inevitable, whether it be next time out or the time thereafter. That's my feeling, and I think that I've made my last word. I'll move the previous question, Mr. President.
Okay. Mr. Hernandez?
In regards to neighborhood councils, I just want to make sure, you'll have situations where some communities will have a greater ability to organize and fulfill the criteria to actually develop a council. In some areas, you'll have communities that aren't going to be able to do that, or aren't nowhere near that format. Yet, you call for a citywide effort, a citywide system, and you also call for five years which the council can't change, but transfer the powers of that department. How do you envision us as a council passing an ordinance that would recreate an equal system, as opposed to a system that will perpetuate the inequalities that currently exist in terms of participation with city government? That's one question I have. And then, in other communities, we have competing interests, and I'll use a very specific example. I tend to find a lot of developing... I tend to find a lot of development interests competing to do development in Chinatown. And I tend to have a long-term residential community who basically wants to be a neighborhood, like other neighborhoods. And there, I mean, the interests are so interlocked in terms of fighting each other, it's hard to get anything done because they're always questioning each other. So you're going to have the ability of both competing interests trying to have that voice and be that voice for that community. I created a CRA board there, a community advisory board, that couldn't elect a president. The votes were always nine to nine. And it at least proved that I balanced it. And so I'm just, but with that, it didn't allow for decisions to be made, either way. How do you envision us as a council dealing with those kinds of issues as part of this department?
Council member, with regard to your first question, which is one that the commissions gave a great deal of thought to, to not build in inequalities that already exist in effect. Under Section 901B, one of the fundamental duties of the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment is to assist neighborhoods in preparing petitions for recognition or certification, identifying boundaries that do not divide communities, and organizing themselves in accordance with the plan. Because you're exactly right, that if it simply left a chance, that those who are already well-organized will have a huge leg up. So one of the goals of the department is to equalize that ability to organize, which, as you know, is really widely dispersed. On your second point, it is also to be hoped that the, although it's no guarantee, that the certification process would put a premium on the ability to bring groups together within a defined neighborhood and to not set up processes that would continue to be, to have conflict within communities. However, there is no guarantee or even likelihood that conflict of that sort will disappear or that this will be the overall answer to that. But we could say that at least at the margins, it will be an attempt to reward the ability to put together plans that do bring often contending groups together.
Goldberg?
In some communities, it's, and probably in every community, there are individuals who are unable, and I say that advisedly, not unwilling, but unable, to participate in a group process without disrupting it. This says that everybody has to be able to participate. Is there, am I missing something? Is there a method by which one could say to someone after they've disrupted the meeting 14 times that you may not disrupt this meeting anymore? Here at the council, we have a sergeant-at-arms to do it, but I have seen an individual literally cause the end of a community group. They simply won't come back anymore because it's just too difficult to handle the particular personality or emotional difficulties of one individual. How is, is there something here that allows that to be dealt with? Because that's an issue that did actually come up several times in my community.
Council member, under 904G, the development of the neighborhood council plan, there are regulations that are required that the neighborhood councils adopt fair and open procedures for the conduct of their business. And in addition to that, the Brown Act has certain requirements with respect to disruptions at meetings.
Okay.
So both of those together might be of assistance.
All right. Well, I didn't see anything specifically, but unfortunately, it's just a fact of life, that there are people who are just unable to participate without being disruptive. I don't think they mean any harm. Really, I don't, but it happens that way. The other question I had about the neighborhood councils is that it calls for bylaws in order to be recognized. I have several neighborhood groupings where the notion of bylaws is the furthest thing from their mind. I mean, first of all, the expression is meaningless to them, and second of all, they are in a early stage of organizational development, and yet, I still meet with them and they still advise me, and I don't know that they'll ever want bylaws. Does that mean they don't get recognition? Is, that they could never get recognition without bylaws? That's a very formal, middle-class structure, to be honest with you.
The group, of course, can continue to exist as it does now and advisory it does now. If they wish to be part of the formal system of neighborhood councils and get funding, then they would need bylaws. However, this creates a Department of Neighborhoods, an institution, that would be there precisely to help them with the development of bylaws, because it's going to be with all of the neighborhoods in the city and make it so it's not a difficult process for them.
So, talk a little bit more about eligible to get funding. What kind of funding are we anticipating these neighborhood councils to receive?
Ultimately, the degree of funding is left to the budget process, to the mayor and to the city council, and the city council is the key to the budget process. We'll need to decide what's the appropriate level of funding for neighborhood councils.
Yeah, that's begging the question. You have something in mind, you just said, in order to be eligible for funding. What kind of funding do you anticipate suggesting, urging?
My hope is that the council in the future will fund the neighborhood councils so they can be effective. That includes funding offices for the neighborhood councils, includes funding some level of staff for the neighborhood councils, providing the necessary equipment, providing so that they have the resources to communicate with their constituents, with each other, and with this council. But the amount has to be left to the council and the budget process.
No, I understand that. I'm trying to figure, you have an intent, legislative intent. I wanted to know what the intent was.
Okay.
Mr. Kiefer, was that the same for you as well?
I think that the provision itself, being left open to the council, recognizes different intents, because people have different expectations about levels of funding. Some people think the funding would be at a lower level, believing that more volunteer efforts would be appropriate. Other people think that the council ought to try and fund them at a higher level to allow for this communication with the council and with other neighborhood councils.
Actually, it's the mayor who has to fund them.
But that's very much why we left it to the council and did not put in some, somebody urged minimal levels of funding and so forth.
Okay, but it is the mayor's budget that will decide that. The council will only, well, you know what I'm saying. I mean, we need to be clear about that when you say it's up to the council. That's not how it works.
Mr. Savarnich?
I'm sorry. Well, it's not.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, as we start to wind down this debate on Charter reform, I think there are some questions that still need to be answered, which are not, which I think create some serious concern. In my last series of questions was indeed the stalemate that could occur because of not a timeline being present to appoint the general managers of the three most important departments of the city. And I think that was an omission that, according to Mr. Deaton, even though it is not provided in the current Charter, should have been provided in the proposed Charter. After all, we are talking about reform here. And so one of the things that still gives me some concern throughout the entire Charter process is indeed the question of those areas of the city that are disenfranchised. And disenfranchised can take many shapes and forms. The answer that I have received so far, commissioners, that the entity that makes up for such disenfranchisement could be, could indeed be the neighborhood councils. However, those councils are advisory-only, with a budget yet to be determined, with a staff yet to be determined. And one of the things that a lot of people in the city, the only representation that they have on a citywide basis, is their council member showing up to these meetings and advocating on their behalf, both at these council meetings, to the general managers of all the departments that provide city services. And as my colleague, Ms. Goldberg, mentioned in a debate maybe two, three sessions ago, what we are talking about here is a distinct shift in the balance of power. There are many council districts in this city that if everyone voted, and I have said this before, voted in a mayoral election, it wouldn't make any difference to the winner or the loser. It wouldn't make any difference at all. And their only hope for getting their share of the city pie is by the leverage that their individual council member exerts within the halls of city government. That has not been addressed in this Charter. In fact, we have taken a step in the opposite direction in regards to this Charter. You cannot abdicate the authority of the city council administratively, its administrative role, as well as its legislative role, and say that we make up for that by giving you some non-binding, non-binding, non-budgetary advisory commissions that have no authority over any city general manager, have no authority over the budget process, have no authority over a lot of the planning decisions when it comes down to the end of the day. And what you have done is indeed told to great, a great majority of the populace of this city, people who don't even have time to focus on this type of business because they're too busy trying to make a living and going to work and take care of their families, that now we are going to entrust the majority of how we govern the city in regard, to a mayor's office, to where if you voted or not, your vote wouldn't make any difference. The one thing I need to hear from the Charter commissions before I sit down again is, please explain to me in a very concise manner how we make up the difference for those areas of the city that are currently disenfranchised, how they benefit under this proposed Charter when we take some of the function away from the council and give it to a mayor, when they're, they as a body, they as a council district, don't count for much in a citywide vote.
All right, thank you, Mr. (inaudible).
I'd like to be able to hear that.
You want to respond to that?
Councilman, I think that the Charter creates many mechanisms to try to address your concern. Let me start with some examples. It says, for instance, that with regard to the harbor commission, there has to be one resident of the harbor area on the commission. It says with regard to the airport commission, there must be one member from the area of LAX and one from Van Nuys. It's a matter of making sure that the communities are heard. I think area planning commissions are a key reform in this Charter, decentralizing planning decisions to the community level. I think neighborhood councils, institutionalizing the structure, are a key way of making communities heard. The voters will also have the opportunity to choose a larger city council, so each representative will serve fewer constituents. And I could go on with many other provisions. Cumulatively, I think they are trying to address exactly the concerns you raise, for those are the same concerns that animated both commissions over the last two years.
Mr. Fuer?
Thank you, Mr. President. I actually want to speak to the question. Clearly, there is controversy here, but there's also a sense of history here. The city has seen its share of division. Some seek to address our city's issues by breaking the city apart, and others have chosen to spend the last two and a half years in a deliberative process that has elevated us many times and is designed to bring residents closer to government. And I think that the unified Charter, on balance, focuses on the fundamentals, the nuts and bolts, that will either make a city work or not, and offers a vision that is both more inclusive than the status quo and has the potential for being more efficient than the status quo. It's more inclusive because it offers, through neighborhood councils, an opportunity for a broad spectrum of stakeholders to get together and collaborate. And I'm hopeful that neighborhood council model leads to genuine authoritative decision-making down the road. It opens up the budget process. The unified Charter would require the budget process to be opened up much earlier than it currently is, and ideally make it much more accessible to all in the city who want to take part in the basic discussion, where are our civic priorities? It opens up the planning process through area planning councils that I think do give us the opportunity to have decision-making at a more localized level. And as Erwin just mentioned, it enables the voters to decide whether they want to have more council members, which would indeed bring council members closer to their constituents by reducing the number of people in the areas of our districts, giving us an opportunity for more intimate relationships with people on the corners, on the streets, where they live. It's also more efficient. I think that the idea of requiring performance audits is a very good idea. I think that when we establish clearer lines of accountability, we're moving in the right direction, and when we eliminate bureaucracy, which this does, with ABZA, for example, I think it's a good thing, on balance, for everybody in the city. I mean, in some, for me, the Charter, the unified Charter, which is slimmer than the status quo, and I think offers better prospects than the status quo, represents progress, not perfection, but it represents progress that I think should lead us not only to put this on the ballot, but notwithstanding the controversy, to support it when it comes before the voters.
Mr. Burnson?
You know, I just couldn't let that remark go by about maximizing the ability of people to participate. You know, unfortunately, some of the people that made this decision don't deal with land use issues in their communities and in their districts and in their neighborhoods on a daily basis. One of the things that we have now, and we have the ability to do now, we have the equivalent in my district of neighborhood planning commissions. They've been there for 20 years, and the people do participate. And these people are people who want to participate. And I'll tell you something, if anything in this Charter diminishes that, I think that would be a huge mistake. Now, I recognize the fact that you left some language in there on how these community councils, how these community councils are going to be negotiated, but, believe me, I've been out in the trenches for a long time dealing with land use, land use issues, not just in my district, but as chair of the planning committee for most of the time I've been here. And there is a method now for people to participate if the council wants to do that. And I know a number of the council offices have these advisory committees. As a matter of fact, Marvin's sitting out there. Marvin will remember when I brought in a motion that provided for the council to establish these, these commissions. We didn't call them commissions, we called them advisory councils. And the council passed it, and I think a number of the members of the council do have those formal councils right now. But, you know, it's easy sitting in a, in a office, or sitting in a university, or sitting someplace, even at a desk someplace, when you're not out and have to listen to the complaints and listen to what your council, what your constituents tell you, and it is a very, very difficult decision. But I hope that, and I'm going to vote for whatever, I'm going to vote to put this on the ballot. There's many things in here I don't agree with, but I appreciate the work that the two commissions did. As I said, you know, if everybody in the world agreed with everything, it would be pretty, a pretty bland world, I guess. But I must tell you that I really have difficulty in perceiving if this can do anything to damage a system that we have in our district, that I think is ideal, both for the people who live there, for the council member that has to make the decisions. I hope that this doesn't destroy that.
Ms. Sikowsky?
I rise, too, just to commend the effort of the two commissioners. I think we are at the point of wrap-up, in part. And most of the questions and many of the issues that have been raised around this horseshoe are the issue essentially of the unknown. In part, the city council members, as we've been going through this, have been going through partly a civics lesson ourselves. How many times have we asked the question of the Charter, Charter Commission members, saying, why did you write this that way? And we've been told, it's already written that way in the current Charter. So a lot of it is reading for the first time and understanding. Even the issue of budget and getting earlier information to the members of the council apparently has been part of the Charter that's, that we've been operating under. So what we are really facing is that fear of the unknown, fear of change. But I think we really owe it to the voters of the city and to the Charter Commission members as well, particularly those from both the elected and the appointed group, who came together after the people of the city spoke and said, we want a Charter, and we want a Charter put on the ballot this next year, this year. And that the two commissions came together from a lot of different opinions, a lot of different perspectives, but generally, most members of the commission, I think, had no axe to grind, other than to make city government better. That's what they heard time and again. They heard it through the issues of accessibility, where despite all of the efforts of the council, some members more than others in creating advisory commissions, it just didn't permeate. The public didn't perceive it. They asked for better accountability. For the most part, I think you heard time and again from people not understanding how decisions were made, who is accountable and how does it work? The whole effort, particularly underscoring neighborhood participation and some of those clarification, even though I think each of us can find problem and fault with parts of it, it's something I think we have to go through together, as I think was initiated and indicated early on by the commission chairs, that we are entering the new millennium, it's time to update our Charter, we all agree with that. And I think this clearly represents a best effort and a very, very good effort at achieving that on many of the issues that I think we were asking you to address and that the voters demanded that you address. So I, too, share with those members of the colleagues who say that this should go on the ballot unfettered, a- the ballot unfettered, a compliment to the two chairs and all the members of the commission who worked together from a lot of different purposes and different agendas to achieve this, and I commend you.
Mrs. Chick.
Hasn't been used much today, I guess. Yes, I just wanted to ask, in terms of implementation, because we now have a date of January 1st, 2000?
July.
July, July 1st. And my understanding is that it's predominantly the city attorney's office that we would turn to to draft ordinances. But in terms of implementation, and I think I'm directing the question both to city staff and the commission, it seems, certainly seems, that either an ad hoc committee on the council or some mechanism, not necessarily to be decided today, is going to need to be put into place if we are in fact to do all of the work needed to have it implemented on July 1st, 2000. What are the thoughts in terms of what is needed and how we are going to go about that, Mr. Deaton?
Well, Councilwoman Chick, I think I'll let the people who think that we can get this done by 2000, July 2000, make that recommendation. Those of us who think it should be in July 2001 will wait and see how they suggest getting it implemented.
Well, as I prepare to take my vote, I certainly would like to hear some of that information. Is there anyone present who was advocating the year 2000? Who could answer my question, since Mr. Deaton cannot?
Well, the question is, can the city attorney get all these ordinances implemented by the time?
Well, of course, I'm interested. I thought the city attorney had already gone on record saying that, yes, those ordinances could be done. So I'm, one, going to ask that question then, but my original question was the mechanism within the council, because the city attorney isn't going to draft ordinances that aren't directed to that office from the council. So that's an unanswered question?
No, that's correct. Our office will participate in the drafting of ordinances that are called for by the charter and in proposing amendments to the municipal code, administrative code that may be required, but obviously, there has to be a structure that the council sets up to consider all those changes. In addition, it's not just ordinances that are required, there's a lot of planning and decision and public input that will have to go into the, for example, the restructuring of the office of the city administrative officer and the new department of neighborhoods and the like, that aren't driven by ordinances and that will require other types of planning that will occur.
From the city attorney's office?
And from the council.
And from the council. Well, certainly, there's lots more decisions then to be made on how we're going to move in this timeline. Thank you.
Mr. Wax.
Well, just a few thoughts, and I think Ms. Chick is right on the right track here. In the last analysis, this is only a step in this historic process, Mr. Fuhr, and in the end, it's going to come back to us to make sure it works if in fact it's passed. In fact, if it's not passed, it's going to still be left to us to try to correct the things that are wrong. This has been a healthy discussion, and I think what we've seen from it is that many of us feel that this charter is taking us in the right direction and is a vast improvement over what we have, and others do not. And as Mr. Hernandez says, you could vote to put it on, but that doesn't mean you have to support it. I think that we will see that the arguments that were raised today will be the arguments used by those who opposed it during the campaign, and it will be a legitimate discussion. I think that what the arguments against it have neglected, however, is that all the arguments that have been raised have been finding things a point wrong here and a point wrong there of what they've come up with. But no one ever stops to think of why we're here in the first place, what's wrong with the system that exists today? Whatever you may say, no defense of the system today can deny the fact that most people feel left out of it, disconnected from it, disenchanted with it, and unhappy with it, and they want to see some change. This is an attempt, this is a best effort on the part of two commissions selected in different ways, working two years, night and day, to come up with something that makes a positive change. That will be the discussion and the debate we will have over the next few months. But even if this passes, this is going to come back to us for an enormous amount of work, and then we're going to have to put on new hats and try to all make it work. And if it doesn't pass, we're going to have to sit and pick and choose from it as to what we still can do to bring about change. In the end, though, we're going to have to, even though we may be divided on this now, be together on it when it comes to implementation, because it's going to fall squarely in our laps, with a very short timeframe, and a huge amount of work to be done, and the two commissions will be gone, and here we are, folks, with the responsibility and the duty to implement a new form of government. Not an easy task, and all of us are going to really be pressed to work together in a way that perhaps we haven't worked before to make it work. But again, I think we clearly must move now in the direction of putting this on the ballot as presented and have the debate and discussion over this in the next few months for the voters to decide in June.
Ms. Galanter.
Thank you. I had just a procedural question here. It's not yet March 5th, although it's getting close. And I understand that, what I've been told is March 5th is the absolute last deadline for anything to get put on the ballot. Is that, have I got that right? Okay. The council has regularly scheduled meetings, we don't have any special meetings planned. We will have a meeting March 3rd and a meeting March 5th. Anyway, the... We're not meeting the 5th? Yeah, we're meeting the 5th. It's next week that there are a couple... Okay. So we have two more meetings during which the council might vote, whatever it might vote. The elected commission can meet or not meet as it chooses up until the 5th as well. So here's, let me see if I can articulate this question. If the council votes before the 5th to put the charter as it is before us at this moment on the ballot, there is nothing, one way or the other, to prevent the elected commission... Well, there's nothing to prevent the council reconsidering tomorrow, but there's nothing to prevent the elected commission from reconsidering, meeting again, making changes, or whatever, between now and the 5th, right?
The elected commission on Saturday voted to approve this as it is. Let me explain, and my instructions as chair, we're subject conclusion of meet and confer. If the council approves the document, it should be immediately filed with the city clerk. Once it's filed with the city clerk, we can't make changes.
All right, wait, but we're still on... Okay, once it's filed with the city clerk, it can't be, we can't make changes. If the council does not vote today to put it on, you can still put it on in the same form or in some other form. So one way or another, I mean, I have confidence that the elected commission is going to put a charter on the ballot, whether the council does or not. So the question I'm trying to figure out is if the council votes, maybe, let me see if I understood your answer, if the council votes today to put what's before us on the charter, you will file it as your thing today?
Well, as soon as meet and confer is formally concluded.
All right. If the council does not vote to put this version on anytime, you still have the option to do that, and you will presumably do it, either in this form or with something else on it, right?
My instructions under the motion passed there is if the council does not approve this today or makes changes, my commission will meet tomorrow at 5:00. If the council approves it, we will not meet, but yes, we will place this on the ballot.
Okay, right, no, no, I have complete confidence that you're going to put one on the ballot. What I'm trying to figure out is whether we're going to get, under which set of circumstances we're going to get one charter on the ballot, and under which set of circumstances we're going to get more than one charter on the ballot. We already know there's no set of circumstances where we won't get a charter on the ballot. So that's all I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Goldberg.
I still have one little question, and then I'll make my comments. And that is, in section 1016, you delete demotion so that discipline is, you can suspend somebody, or you can discharge them, but you can't demote them? Is that correct?
That was actually a new provision that was put in by the unified charter the unions objected to, and they withdrew it at union request.
I see. So that's, I wondered how that happened, I was just curious. Okay. I think that my comments are, reflect my ambivalence about all of this. On the one hand, I think the most telling argument was made by Mr. Savornich. The fact of the matter is, is that because we have different voting bases, whenever you empower the mayor's office in any way, shape, or form, you are in fact making the relative voice of those areas of the city with fewer voters less powerful. I mean, that's a fact, because I can tell you right now that there are lots of parts of this city that do not feel connected to the mayor in any way, shape, or form, and frankly, they didn't have the last mayor either, because it's still the same voting blocks. They may have liked his policies, better or worse, but they didn't feel connected, because there are voting blocks that really, in four districts, represent enough votes to elect a mayor without all the rest of us bothering, in the 11 other districts. That being the case, I think it is always regressive and not reform in a local city government to add more power to the central authority. That's just my opinion. Secondly, I think that the notion of this neighborhood councils is smoke and mirrors. I think if we really meant to empower neighborhood councils, and I know there was much desire to do that on part of one of the commissions, you'd actually give them the right to decide something, anything of importance to them. By not giving them any decision-making powers, it's the student council approach. They can all come together, they can all meet, we can have a department that's going to get them together. There'll be many more of them than there are now, that's good, but they won't really have any say-so about much of anything unless the member in office and the mayor, with the new enhanced powers, decides that the mayor wants to hear from them. So I think that that's a lot of window dressing, and I think it's a missed opportunity. I think we had a real opportunity, and I think it was a missed opportunity. I understand all the politics about why it happened, but I think it would be, I would be less than candid to say that this could have been an historic moment, and I don't think it quite is, because I think we really missed an opportunity to spread the decision-making downward, which I think is going to be the trend in the new millennium, but it isn't going to be in this charter. Finally, I think that the one most important thing that disturbs me is not the issue of the power of the mayor versus the power of the council or all of those other things, but the opportunity unintended, and the mayor likes to talk about that himself, the unintended consequences. I think the unintended consequences of this is going to actually move the government further away from the people, not closer, because the mayor's office is the one that's the big winning office, frankly, in this charter reform, or so-called reform, I don't consider it reform. And that's going to mean that increasingly, council members are not going to have the sway they do now over getting services provided for their districts, and we're going to all have signs in our office that says, if you're having problems, here's the mayor's phone number, give them a call. I think that moves government away from the people, not closer to it. So I have, you know, that's not to say that there aren't, in fact, I would say there are more things I agree with in the charter that I disagree with. And so I'm very ambivalent, because I think that what has happened is, is that we've lost an opportunity to really empower people by really pushing decisions downward, we've lost the opportunity to really get people closer, and instead, we have the appearances without the reality. Finally, I think that we have opened the door to a larger possibility for corruption and misdeeds than we have before. The reason we've had so many people under civil service was so that they would not be allowed to be influenced in their decision-making about what's good for the people by the politics of whoever was of the appointing authority. We have now removed that.
Thank you. Mr. Hernandez. Well, Mr. Burnson wants to make an announcement.
Yeah, for anybody here waiting for the Planning Land Use Management Committee, which was supposed to start at 1:00, we will convene five minutes after adjournment of the council. Thank you.
Mr. President, members of the council, you know, it's amazing, in my neighborhood, sometimes I wake up and there are notes on the door that say, you know, I got a parking ticket, but they didn't clean the street. I go to the local restaurants to eat, and people talk to me about potholes and when the street's going to be paved, and for some reason, over the last year and a half, what you need to know is not a single person from my district has talked to me about charter reform. I mean, I haven't heard about it in Pico Union, I haven't heard about it in Chinatown, I haven't heard about it in Hyde Park. I've brought it up and tried to explain to people the historic significance of this process. And I need you to know that the commissions have done their work in trying to be out there, in trying to get community involvement, but quite frankly, I haven't seen the masses that everybody talks about. And when we talk about the system of reform, what you need to understand is it didn't start from the neighborhoods I represent. It's like, finally, as a result of court actions, they've been getting a voice on this council. Something that just recently, in their history, has begun to happen. You see, I tried to get involved through organizations in regards to some of the involvement with the commissions. I met with Maldif, I met with representatives of the Coalition on Reapportionment, we would have meetings, and I would tell them, you have to exert your voice. And some of the commissioners would gather, meet with us, but very few people would show up at those meetings. And it was because I don't think the cry for reform was coming from the communities I represent. Now, I had expressed the desire that there should be 35 council seats, and the reason I expressed that desire was quite simply because the city of Burbank with its 90,000 people, and the city of Glenda with its 160,000 people, doesn't compare to the responsibility I have with the 250,000 people I'm trying to represent. Now, I'm sharing that with you because I really think this question of reform is not something that's touched my neighborhoods. And the reason is, my neighborhoods are just beginning to play the game. They're just beginning to participate in government. And what this reform does, in an indirect way, is again stacking the odds against them. I need you to understand that. Because what it's doing is it's limiting my ability to represent them when I'm dealing with issues of the mayor. A mayor who, quite frankly, whether it was this mayor or another mayor, is going to respond to the people who have the loudest voice. That's how this city's been created. That's how we got to where we're at. And so even though there are things here I agree with, there are many things I disagree with, because it's changing the rules. And see, I plan to put it on the ballot, but quite frankly, you need to understand, I find it very hard for me to support it. And my role is to get people involved in the process, and that's what I plan to do. But it's not something my constituents... I don't wake up and people say, what's going on with charter reform?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Alatorre. Mr. Savornich wants to be heard for a fourth time or fifth time.
I'll let you move the previous question.
Mr. Alatorre's moved the previous question. Okay, let's call on Mr. Savornich, then I'll call on Mr. Alatorre.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. As, again, we try to wipe up or wind down this debate, Freud is such a wonderful guy to quote. One of the things to which I think, again, that we need to take under consideration is indeed the balance of power in this city. One of the things that my colleague, that we take great pride in in this country, is the system of checks and balances. And one of the things to which I think we need to accentuate one more time is the total votes in four council districts in participation equal that of the other 11. And I think it is not coincidence that when this charter reform is going to be placed on the ballot, there are going to be 13 council districts that will not have an election, there will be two council districts that more than likely will have a runoff, and that everybody else is just going to be showing up for maybe a school board runoff or not, or to vote on this, which for my district, to take an example, there are 240,000 constituents, 90,000 people registered to vote, and at this election, to determine what the constitution of the city of Los Angeles is going to look like, we will be lucky if 10,000 to 12,000 people get out to vote, if that. And so if you extrapolate that citywide, this will probably be one of the lowest voter turnouts to decide what our city government will look like for this foreseeable future. And we're calling that reform. And we're calling that reform. And that bothers me. Because indeed, what we will be seeing is that people who live in four council districts, who usually turn out to vote come hell or high water, will be making a decision for the 11 other council districts in a very disproportionate way. Up to this time, I've been very critical in regards to some of the issues that I've seen come before this council in regards to charter reform. And until today, I was trying to decide whether or not that I would vote to put this on the ballot. But I think that's an important vote. I think this does need to go before the voters. I think for two reasons. One, I think the voters need to be the ultimate yes or no in regards to charter reform. And far be it from me to be that obstacle in order for them to make that decision. Number two, I think it throws cold water on the entire volunteer commission process if we go ahead and blindly cast aside the hard work that the commissioners have put forth, even though we may disagree with a lot of it. So today, I am going to vote to put this ballot measure before the people of the city of Los Angeles. But after I put it on the -- vote to put it on the ballot, I am going to encourage everyone to vote against it.
Mr. Alatorre. Mr. Alatorre moves a previous question. Prepare the roll on a previous question which would cut off debate. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Oh, boy. Everybody wanted to cut the debate off. Okay, we have the motion before us. Motion made by me and seconded by Mr. Wax. Prepare the roll. Prepare the roll on that. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes, one no.
That is approved. Next item.
Item 32 calls special.
We, again, before we let -- again, thank George and Irwin and Rafe and Ms. Stout and all the members of the commissions that worked so hard on this. I don't think it was a rushed deal like Mr. Holden said, but everybody has their own opinion, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We'll send that forthwith.
I just wondered how I voted when I wasn't here. When I wasn't here? I don't think that's right. I think you should have the not -- you should have the absentee if I wasn't here.
Well, you were in the back room, weren't you?
Yes. That's why I was in the back room.
Well, you didn't say you want to be -- you don't want to be on the record?
That's right. You have to say you're leaving.
Mr. Holden.
Aye.
Huh?
Holden, no to aye.
Mr. Holden wants to be an aye vote. Ms. Galanter was out of the room, so she is not a -- Conrad, change Mr. Holden's vote to aye, and Ms. Galanter was out of the room. So it's still 13 to nothing. Yeah. Okay. What do we have now?
Item number 32 calls special by Ms. Ridley Thomas.
Mr. Ridley Thomas, you call 32 special.
Mr. President, I did, and I should say pursuant to the city attorney's consideration, as you will recall last week, there was a situation that caused all of us a considerable amount of concern with respect to one of our citizens having -- falling into a hole that resulted in his being hospitalized. And it's my understanding that the city attorney advises that this is a matter that should be taken up in executive session, Mr. President.
You're to 32. You want to take an executive session?
Pursuant to the advice of the city attorney's office.
Okay. All right. Well, let's have public comment, and then we'll go into executive session. David Thompson.
We've got her on the agenda.
Dave Thompson.
Thank you, John Perrow. If there is any lawyers out in the community that heard this mess on Channel 35 or will be hearing it in the newspapers or reading it in newspapers, please contact anybody and everybody to get this thing defeated as long as they are going to vote 13 to nothing to actually have a confined charter movement. I think that the board members who said they will not allow their community to vote a yes vote on this, I think I have to congratulate them very much so. They know what the hell's going on in this mess. There is no reason why the CAO has to resign on the 31st of March. But he's doing it mainly because the mayor wants too much power. The mayor is going to have too much power with this messy thing that you put on the ballot. It is obvious that some of you won't be here when the mayor has that power. Hopefully, somebody, and I'm asking for any lawyer, any lawyer in this city, to take this thing to court because of Brown Act violations that are occurring or did occur at the time when these meetings were held.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watt. Okay, that's all the cards we have, so the public comment period is closed. What do we have next? We have --
Item number 32, close session.
Okay, we have close session. Everyone not involved with a close session, please leave the council chamber. We will take 32 first. So Sergeant, sure, Mr. Alatorre.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, I wanted just to announce that Budget Finance Committee will be meeting promptly at the -- if it's passed 2:00 o'clock promptly upon adjournment of council.
We have everything today. Everything. The cameras are not on. Okay, we're back in open session. What I -- give us --
31a.
31a. Okay. Just explain what it is, so we'll have it on record.
31a is a motion by Mr. Alatorre, Ms. Walters regarding the Greek Theater. Mald Craft Incorporated versus City of Los Angeles, claim number C97-2467.
And the amount of how much?
And the amount of $225,000.
Okay. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. The next item.
Item number 31b is the case of Damian DeCheboris versus Dennis Latta, Los Angeles Superior Court case number BC110572. Authorized city attorney to expend $200,000 in settlement.
Okay. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, one no.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number 31c is Richard and Joan Longwell versus City of Los Angeles, Superior Court case number BC190765. Authorized city attorney to expend $142,500 in settlement.
Prepare the roll on that. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. The next item.
Item number 31d is the case of Peter Williams versus Greg Cubian, United States District Court number CV976269. Authorized city attorney to expend $950,000 in settlement of the case entitled Peter Williams versus Greg Cubian.
Okay. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith on all those items. All 31a, b, and d. Okay, the next item.
The desk is clear.
The desk is clear. We got some adjournment motions. Would everyone please stand? Members of the council, I have three. Veda Oldfield passed away. She leaves her husband Barney, who was really a war hero. Barney Oldfield, not the one that did the racing. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Christopher Richard Byrne, who passed away. He started his career as a California Youth Authority in 1930 and retired after 35 years. He leaves a son, Richard Byrne, who, as we all know, represented the city in the Willie Williams settlement.
Yeah, I think all members on that.
All members on that. And I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Sam Getzoff, who passed away. He leaves a son Larry and a daughter Suzie. And I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of John D. Lusk, who passed away. He built more than 40,000 homes and scores of shopping centers in the LA area. He leaves his wife Nancy, son William and Robert, and a daughter Kristen. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, members of the council, I share with sadness the passing of Horace Tapscott. Many of you will know him as a world-renowned jazz solo pianist. There was a concert just this past Sunday on the date of his death where it was hoped that Horace would have been able to make one last appearance. Unfortunately, he was not, but it was in his honor that musicians from far and wide played some of the best jazz in his memory that has been heard in a long time, not the least of which was his very own grandson. So with that in mind, that I ask that we adjourn in the memory of the great Horace Tapscott.
Did you have one?
Yes, I'd like the council to adjourn in the memory of Jack Atlas, who was a really well-known movie publicist and person given the credit for sort of designing movie trailers. And he's -- I'd like to have him be remembered by the council.
Mrs. Walters.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask the council to adjourn in memory of Mrs. Marzel Young, who had retired just last September from the Department of Water and Power after 14 years of service. She was a ninth council district resident for most of her life. She is the mother of Tammy Young, a Los Angeles city employee of General Services Security. She works city hall security here. Ms. Marzel Young is survived by her mother, Cora Johnson. Three daughters, Tammy, whom I've already mentioned, and Sharna Young and Cheryl Washington. Three sons, Antonio Kyle and Theron Young. She also leaves four sisters and two brothers.
Call the roll.